Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of this council is present. I'm asking for all members to please take your seats. I'm asking for all visitors to please retire to the seats outside the rails. And before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent and/or vibrate. Most importantly, I'm asking for you to take all sidebar conversations out of the city council chambers. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Reverend Kathy M. Mitchell, Assistant Pastor of Triumph Baptist Church. She is here today as guest of the Majority Whip Councilmember Isaiah Thomas. I'll ask all members and guests to please rise.
Please bow your heads, close your eyes, and open your hearts. God, our Father and Creator, Jesus Christ, our Son and Redeemer, Holy Ghost, our Guide and Counselor, we give you praise and thanksgiving for being in your holy presence and being on one accord at this solemn moment. This prayer is one of faith and it comes through human lips that are at times ones of doubt. We are relying on your goodness and believing all of your promises. We realize that there is no layaway plan on your grace and mercy, for they are new and fresh every day. We ask that you honor and bless us as only you can. Our souls are anchored in you. Oh Lord, you are our Father; we are the clay, and you are our potter, and we are all at the work of your hand. Forgive our foolish race; re-cloth us in our right mind and breathe through the hearts of our desire. We come on the behalf of the Athens of America, the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection, the birthplace of American democracy within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We know and acknowledge that the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof, the world and they that dwell therein. So this prayer is one of intercession for neighborhoods and communities, parks and rivers, colleges and universities, malls, office buildings, businesses, restaurants, banks, post offices, libraries, hospitals, schools and churches, mosques and synagogues, temples, corporations and stadiums, theaters and museums, SEPTA and Amtrak, the Philadelphia International Airport, bus lines and taxi cabs, Uber and Lyft, the police department, the fire department, first responders, the sanitation and street departments. We pray for her honor, the mayor Sherrell Parker, and Philadelphia City Council. Heavenly Father, we pause for prayer not just to do all of the talking, but to also listen to you. At this very moment, wickedness, evil, and indiscriminate acts of violence are still at work. We ask for your truth and justice to prevail. Use the members of city council as instruments of your glory and grace. Give them the strength and stamina to face stress and pressure when it appears. Infuse them with insight and fortitude to expect the unexpected and develop ethical behavior to demonstrate true patriotism. We lift them up to you as well as their families and loved ones. Keep their homes safe and secure. Oh, that you would bless them indeed. Enlarge their territory and keep your hand upon them. We pray for them to have tough minds and tender hearts, to be as wise as serpents and as harmless as doves. Sometimes they have to take the heat when it is not their fault and attacks will be up close and personal. We realize that they control and divide resources and face challenges and prioritize decisions. Lord God, they represent people, some who trust them and some who do not. We pray for calmness of spirit and clarity of thought and speech, so we ask for an enduring anointing to be poured out on each and every one of them. If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and will hear their land. We want to hear from you, Lord. We want you to hear from us. Bow down thine ear and hear us when we pray. We want you to forgive our sin. We want you to heal our land. Move by your spirit. Move like you've never moved before. Let judgment run down as waters and righteousness as a mighty stream. We want your blessings. Bless us in spite of us. We need your peace. We need your power. We need your presence. Come by here, Lord. Come on by here. Somebody's praying, Lord. Come on by here. We thank you and we pray this prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen. Amen. And amen.
The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June the 5th, 2025. The chair recognizes Majority Deputy Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 5th, 2025 be approved.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June the 5th, 2025 stand and approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
The chair thanks the council member. It's an interesting one. On behalf of the minority, the chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the minority, on behalf of Councilmember Brooks, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you very much. Leave is granted. The chair now recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that the legislative matters stated by Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All in favor will indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize that guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning on behalf of all members of city council. I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city, and we certainly invite you to come again. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council President. During the welcome, I'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge very special guests that we have in chambers today. They are here in support of the resolution being introduced by my colleague, Councilmember Cindy Bass, with your support, Council President, on behalf of Tracy Powell. We have with us Commissioner Crystal Jacob Shipman, Tiffany Wilson, Jimmy Williams, Elizabeth Paris, Courtney Richardson, Kevin Harden, and Tracy's mom, Andrea Powell. You all may remember Tracy as one of our real estate divas here in the city of Philadelphia, but she was born and bred in the city from the great 8th Council District, and she is one and was one of our stars in the Philadelphia community. She worked with us in council and worked with many organizations across the city to help many individuals achieve first-time homeownership and generational wealth. We will miss her, her knowledge. We will miss her infectious smile. We will miss just how much fun she had while doing the work that she loved, and I know that her family and friends will miss her most, so I ask that they stand and be acknowledged, and they will speak later during public comment. In addition to that, Council President, on behalf of Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr., my district council member and proud alum of Overbrook High School, together we are welcoming the young people from Overbrook High School's Panther Peace Corps. The program was founded in 2008 by Overbrook High School alumna Jamira Burley, who was actually one of my students when I was a teacher at Overbrook High School, and the Panther Peace Corps has transformed into a prominent student-led organization dedicated to promoting peace, preventing violence, and providing vital services for their peers. And so we want to welcome them to chambers this morning on behalf of Councilmember Jones and I. They've been here all morning. They had breakfast in council, and I am just so proud to welcome them with Councilmember Jones.
Let's give our young people a round of applause, please.
And finally, Council President, I'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge someone we all know and love, someone who has worked with all of us here in council. She is an institution. She is our boss, and she is someone who loves and cares for each one of our offices and makes sure that we are okay behind the scenes. You know, we're in the front of this work, but it takes a village behind the scenes to help us move with our day-to-day operation. We happen to share a birthday. We have the same birthday and a lot of love, and so I'd like to recognize on the occasion of her retirement from council, on your behalf, Council President, on behalf of all the members, DeeDee Ing, who is here today with her daughter Hope, who joined us from North Carolina. We thank you so much for being here. We love you. We are going to miss you, and we appreciate every single thing you've done on our behalf. Please stand.
Love me some, Miss DeeDee. Also want to acknowledge the CEO and founder. There would be a resolution introduced by Majority Whip, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, acknowledging Mesquine Clothing Line. We have today the CEO and founder, Mr. Emon Anderson, and most of you may or may not know. Mesquine was one of the foremost clothing line that contributed to the fashion culture here in the city of Philadelphia. Before Milano, before Lavello, before Belargo, and all the other new clothing lines, it was Mesquine Fashion Line that put the city of Philadelphia on the map, not only just nationally but internationally. So I just want to acknowledge Mr. and founder of Mesquine Clothing Line, Emon Anderson. Could you just please stand? As there are no presentations today, the next order of business is communications. The chair requests that the sergeant-at-arm delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Would the chief clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the President and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4-604 and 2-307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill number 250293, not for approval. Bill number 250334, 250493, 250494, 250523, approval with amendments. 250524, approval with amendments. 250536, not for approval. 250537, approval with request for further community engagement. 250538, approval with request for further community engagement. 250569, 250570, and 250576. I am pleased to advise you that on June 11th, 2025, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on May 29th, 2025. Bill number 250266, 250267, 250325, 250327, 250367, 250368, 250369, 250370, 250374, 250377, 250381, and 250382. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, the proposed ordinance, an ordinance amending Section 12-701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane and removal of a travel lane around City Hall under certain terms and conditions. And pursuant to Sections 4-604 and 2-307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill number 250197 and Bill number 250198. There are no further communications in my possession, Council President.
Thank you very much. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The chair recognizes Councilmember Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer two bills on your behalf and two resolutions on your behalf, one privileged and one non-privileged.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled The Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code and the International Residential Code, Part IV, Energy Conservation, as published by the International Code Council, with previously adopted amendments thereto as authorized by the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
An ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled The Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code by adopting the 2021 edition of the International Plumbing Code as published by the International Code Council, including introduction of new amendments and maintenance of previously adopted amendments to the 2018 International Plumbing Code as adopted under the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a resolution thanking DeeDee Ing for her many years of distinguished service to the city of Philadelphia and congratulating her on the occasion of her retirement.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to reject Senate Bill 527, which would repeal the Sterling Act and have devastating impact on the city of Philadelphia's fiscal stability, therefore financially crippling public services and regional leadership.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in the next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gartia.
Good morning, Council President. Nothing today.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Majority Whip, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. Today I have two bills and two resolutions. Thank you, Council President. Actually, I'm sorry, one resolution on your behalf as well, so thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Chapter 19-2600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes by creating a tax credit to encourage certain merchants to utilize the services of Philadelphia-based performing artists, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
A second bill? Okay. And an ordinance amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by adding a new chapter entitled Minimum Training for Security Officers.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a privileged resolution honoring the founders of Mesquine Originals for their contributions to Philadelphia's fashion scene.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of the Philly is a Music City Task Force by the Committee of Legislative Oversight to develop and maintain the cultural and economic impact of music in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, no new bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Good morning, Council President. Colleagues and the public, I have two privileged resolutions, and if I could recognize somebody...
Absolutely. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring the Philadelphia Bar Association Executive Director Harvey Hurdle for his years of service with and retirement from the Philadelphia Bar Association.
Hey, Council President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau.
Thank you. I wanted to recognize Harvey Hurdle and ask him to stand for a minute. He has, uh... for his many years of service has transformed the Philadelphia Bar Association into the legal powerhouse that it is now, and also has been a tremendous leader in the LGBTQ+ community for so many years. So congratulations on your retirement. We know you're not going very far.
Thank you very much. Let's give him a round of applause, everyone, please. Great work that you have done. This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution celebrating the 10th anniversary of the United States Supreme Court's landmark marriage equality ruling, Obergefell versus Hodges, and honoring the lead plaintiff, James Jim Obergefell, and the 29 other plaintiffs who bravely stood up for their fundamental right to marry.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Rulandau. I'm sorry. Councilman Kessie Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2847 Boudnot Street located in the 7th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration at our next session of council. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer two bills and two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by North Street, Broad Street, Wallace Street, and 15th Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance amending Section 12-701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane and removal of a travel lane around City Hall under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a non-privileged resolution, also naming the 1500 block of Gerard Avenue as Alfonso Deal Way.
Resume.
A non-privileged resolution repealing Resolution 250586, adopted May 29th, 2025, which also named the 1500 block of Gerard Avenue as Alfonso Deal Way.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Jeffrey J. Young for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we ask for suspension of the rules to allow for the passage of this resolution today.
It has been moved in propriety, seconding that all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. This resolution will be placed on today's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution, also naming the 1500 block of Gerard Avenue as Alfonso Deal Way.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar for consideration in the next session of council. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Good afternoon, Council President. I have not attended.
Thank you very much, sir. Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. I have two bills and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions? Could y'all keep it down just a little bit to my left, please? Chief clerk, please resume.
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter entitled Referenda Approved by Voters by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly to provide sustainable and consistent funding to mass transit throughout the Commonwealth, including SEPTA, fixing the date of a special election for such purpose, prescribing the form of ballot question to be voted on, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make special arrangements for the special election.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to Article 8, Chapter 5 of the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter entitled Referenda Approved by the Voters by adding a new section providing that the citizens of Philadelphia call upon the Pennsylvania General Assembly to provide sustainable and consistent funding to mass transit throughout the Commonwealth, including to SEPTA.
This resolution will be placed on the final passes calendar. This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance amending Title 19, Finances, Taxes, and Collections of the Philadelphia Code, to add a new chapter creating the Philadelphia Retirement Savings Program as an automated savings program for certain employees in the city of Philadelphia, to establish the Philadelphia Retirement Savings Board, and to establish the Retirement Savings Administration Fund, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Counsel be at ease. This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Councilor Beatty. Chief clerk, please resume. Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squiller.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Hey, how are you, Councilman?
Good.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you too, sir.
I offer two bills and one non-privileged resolution to be recognized on the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing a dumpster enclosure encroachment at 782 through 84 South Third Street, Philadelphia, PA 19147, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
An ordinance authorizing a streetery in the right-of-way adjacent to 782 through 84 South Third Street, Philadelphia, PA 19147, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the United States Congress to facilitate the immediate release of FY25 historic preservation funding.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration in the next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the consideration for the non-privileged resolution just read into the record from the clerk.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. It has a moving property. Second, that all those in favor the motion that this bill will be on, this resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Tracy Noel Powell and celebrating her boundless spirit, tireless work, and profound impact on the lives of countless others.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. Today I have one bill, one non-privileged resolution, and one privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Chapter 17-1600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans to add two additional business community members to the Economic Opportunity Review Committee, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution amending and restating Resolution 120184 to appoint two additional business community members to the Economic Opportunity Review Committee.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a privileged resolution thanking Philadelphia Eagles owner Jeffrey Lory and his family for their generous $50 million donation to the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia and Penn Medicine to establish the Lory Autism Institute, an organization centered on accelerating autism research.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The next order of business is reports from committee. The chair recognizes Councilmember Deputy Whip Cindy Bass for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Would the chief clerk please read the report?
To the Committee on Rules, to which were referred the following bill: Bill Number 250333. An ordinance amending Title 14, the zoning code of Philadelphia, the zoning code of the Philadelphia Code, Sections 14-409, entitled SPCIV, Civic Educational and Medical Special Purpose District, and amending Title 14-602, entitled Use Tables, by allowing religious assembly uses in certain special purpose districts, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Rules, Council President.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading this day of the bill just read into the record by the chief clerk.
It has a moving property. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as per the consideration of the bill just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor in motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from the committees with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on a second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council, as there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar: Numbers 250609, 250617, 250619, 250620, 250629, 250630, 250631, 250634, and 250637.
It has a moving property. Second, that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. The chair again recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars: Numbers 250291, 250293, 250334, 250431, 250432, 250436-A, 241024, 250103, 250569, 250570, 250571, 250483, 250484-A, 250526, 250537, 250538, 250328, 250384, 250425, 250427, 250430, 250437, 250439, 250488, 250489, 250490, 250494, 250532, 250535, 250536, 240671, 241082, and 250379.
It has a moving property. Second, that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the bill consent agenda shortly. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up any additional bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today: Numbers 250539, 250618, 250621, 250195, 250196, 250197, 250198, 250199, 250200, 250201, 250202, 250210, 250211, 250212, 250523, 250524, 250525, 250174, 250332, 250528, 250529, 250530, 250566, 250567, 250568, 241057, 250044-A, 250331, and 250231-A. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held: 250214, 250303, and 250373. 250530 is being amended.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider the public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible acting in today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name and miss hashing at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have been signed, once you have signed up, you will recall in the order in which your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commentators will each have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session today due to the extenuous public comment. Sign-up sheet, the time limit will be one minute. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfulness to the one-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see the green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once one minute has passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I will now ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
May we have Crystal Jacobs Shipman, Kevin Harden, Courtney Richardson, Ibeen Anderson, May Kamari Ellis, Jimmy Williams, Elizabeth Paris, and Benita Cummings also make their way to the podium.
Is that the great Kevin Harden, Esquire? Welcome to City Council Day, Mr. Harden. We welcome you, sir.
Ready for us?
Good morning, Ms. Jacobs. How are you today?
Good morning, Council President.
It's always a pleasure to see you, and welcome back to City Council. Please proceed.
All right. Thank you, Council President, for allowing us the opportunity to join you, Councilmember Cindy Bass, Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson, your esteemed colleagues, all in support of the resolution honoring the legacy and impact of Tracy Powell. I'm representing both her mother, Andrea Richardson-Powell, who is here in our colleague, our friend circle of more than 30 years. I'd like to ask all of her friends, family, sorority sisters, the AKAs that are in the house, members of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, to please stand. Tracy's sudden passing on May 22nd leaves a void in the lives of countless families in Philadelphia and the surrounding counties who were perhaps in the market for a small piece of the American dream. As the owner of her own brokerage firm and real estate agency under the Realty One umbrella, Tracy utilized her expertise in the industry as a Realtor for close to 25 years, ensuring that homeownership was attainable for anyone who was ready to take on that responsibility. She worked hard to make deals that were affordable for singles and families alike, as she understood the value in being a homeowner and all the doors and possibilities available to those looking to use leverage by owning a property. The irony of this resolution being introduced on today is not lost on me. Considering City Council's passing of the budget and the mayor's unprecedented investment and commitment to making homeownership for Philadelphia residents a reality, Tracy would indeed be pleased. In life, we were enormously proud of Tracy, and death, we are blessed to celebrate her tremendous legacy of wealth building for marginalized and in marginalized communities. Tracy was undoubtedly an influencer. She not only spoke for the culture, but helped to shape it. One who contributed meaningful to much-needed conversations around generational wealth, one who helped others to grow in their abilities, and one who fostered connections among people from all walks of life. She was the ultimate collaborator, and could be quoted on her last session on the Black Wealth Project podcast as saying, "We have to do better, a better job of building community. Since we've been in this country, we've been taught a Western civilization way of living that's not in our DNA. We barter, we do community, we use each other's strengths, we trade. We put people in positions that have their strengths and the ones that have weaknesses, we pair them up. We have to do a better job of working within our community to find people with the strengths, with the credentials, and if they don't have the credentials and they're more blue collar, we can put them in spaces to do labor." Because we have the expertise and excellence in labor, we have expertise in contracts and relationships, and we also have expertise in people who just know how to structure stuff. Seek those people out and put them in position to do their strengths and create a better and more functional community, end quote. We will miss her insight, her energy, her cheerful spirit, her extreme thoughtfulness, kindness, and care for others. I will miss her randomly popping up at my house to take our kids to tree and zingles and read us, or the phone calls that she says, "Kamish, somebody missed a block of trash in Area 2B, and the Graysberry Homeowners Association will be coming for you." On tomorrow, Tracy, a lover of the arts, Fashion Week, and the Met Gala will be memorialized at Philly's, at Philly's very own Met. Doors open at 9:00, the Ivy Beyond the Wall service at 9:30, funeral-style memorial at 10:00. All are welcome to attend. In closing, allow me to paraphrase the words of Maya Angelou: "It's not what people say or what they do, but how you make them feel." Tracy Powell was a doer, but it's all the ways in which she made each of us feel, be seen, or heard that will be remembered most. Thank you.
May it please this honorable counsel. I think this is my first time speaking before City Council, so I think it speaks to the impact that Tracy Powell's had on my life. I'd like to thank Council President Kenyatta Johnson and the sponsors of this resolution, the Honorable Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, and the Honorable Majority Deputy Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass. Many of those gathered here today may have known Tracy Powell. If you never had the opportunity to meet her, I apologize that you did not, that you missed the opportunity to have your life improved upon by someone who grew to be family to me. Tracy was a butterfly. She was vibrant, vivacious, colorful, graceful, and transformative. And in the end, like the presence of a butterfly that decides to rest for a moment on the tip of your finger, on the tip of your nose, her presence was fleeting. We got to experience her, we got to see her beauty, and then she was gone. Some of the, some of you are very familiar with parts of my personal story. I see so many friends here on council that know about my transformation after losing both of my parents and being shot five times. Tracy was a part of my story, and I wanted to make sure that I was here to put it on the historical record that a significant contributing factor to my own success and the success of hundreds of Philadelphia families and some of the individuals even in this room on this council was the result of the efforts of Tracy Powell. She was an example for all of us in the basic tenets of servant leadership. She had friendship, she had love, she had ambition. And for the members of council here who I know are frequently the tow truck that gets called, and we always wonder, who do you call when you need to tow? The tow truck. I want to tell you all that it's very important that you remember the three Ps of Tracy P. One is that she was present. Second is that she was proximate, and I'm going to break a rule because it'll be more memorable. She was unpretentious, which starts with a U, but it's still one of the Ps of Tracy P. I'm preaching to the choir when it comes to being present, proximate, and unpretentious. But she was omnipresent in our communities. She built trust, and you all understand that to build trust, you have to show up. That's rule number one. You gotta show up. You have to be present. She always showed up with her hallmark energy, joyful spirit, and thoughtfulness. Tracy sparkled in every room she showed up in. The thing about proximity and the difference between presence and proximity is presence is just being there. Anyone could be in this room right now. But proximity is that warmth that you offer to someone so that you can build that deep substantive relationship. Proximity is knowing your friend's kid's names. Proximity is breaking bread over dinner. It's one, proximity is making sure that, you know, I got $2 left? Well, let's go, what we used to call it a bum box growing up in West Philly. You go get a dollar rice and gravy from Danny Wach. That was the sort of person that Tracy was. If, if you didn't have the money, the time, the treasure, she would give her last to you. Hurt, your wounds were her wounds. She could feel your anxiety and step in. She could sense your needs and fears and offer stability, trust, and support. My favorite Tracy story is I grew up in a Muslim household. I don't identify. I'm not a particularly religious person, but when my daughter was first born, like some families, we had some family hegemony, and my daughter was staying with me, and we had a, you know, a split living arrangement, and I called Tracy, and she said, "Well, what are you doing for Christmas?" I said, "Well, Tracy, I don't really celebrate Christmas." She said, "Well, Sasha does," and she showed up at my house and decorated the entire house. I mean, she had a tree, lights. She was up there with a, with a, with a, with a, and mind you, Tracy was about five foot one. So for her being up on my house putting up Christmas lights was something very significant. I'll close on this. The last time I saw Tracy was at the home, at my home for a celebration of a personal accomplishment. Many of you were also there, and she bought me a compass. That was her gift to me on the occasion of me making partner at my law firm. And this morning, I was looking for some inspiration and some guidance, and really just to make sense of all of this, like many of her family and friends are. And I picked up the compass to, to look at it, and it has an inscription that tells me to remember my morals and remember that the things that got me where I am today are the same character traits that I should maintain as I proceed forward, which I think all of us understand. You have to be true to yourself. And I'll close on this. And I'll close on this. The compass, and I mean, compasses work one way. It points to north, but when I picked up the compass, Council President, it pointed to me. And when I say that with the expression that you have to remember that you have to be present, proximate, and unpretentious with yourself as leaders, I ask that you all take care of yourselves so that you can continue serving our communities and having the same pact Tracy Powell had on me. Thank you.
Good evening, good afternoon, or good morning, Council. My name is Courtney Richardson. I have the honor of serving as the president of the Philadelphia, the Barrister Association of Philadelphia. Tracy Noel Powell was not only a proud supporter of barristers, but we shared a bond through America's premier Greek-letter organization for African-American women, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and the Black Wealth Project. But above all, Tracy was my friend. Tracy was my tow truck. When I needed to rehab my childhood home in the Eighth Councilmatic District, Tracy gave me her resources to do so. Tracy represented everything that is right with Philadelphia, building community, modeling collective responsibility, and uplifting others. A real estate powerhouse for over two decades, her accolades were many, including from this very body, but her impact reached beyond, far beyond her career. She was a hope dealer. Her words and presence reminded people of just who they were, but who God created them to be. As an educator in generational wealth, she inspired like the best of our schools have to offer, and we all wanted more time, especially her beloved mother, Ms. Andrea. But we are deeply grateful for the forty-four beautiful years she gave to this city and to all of us. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. My name is Kamari Ellis. Thank you all for having me to speak on behalf of my good friend Tracy. Okay. Is that better? All right. So thank you all for allowing me to speak on behalf of my good friend Tracy Powell. Tracy and I were both co-founders of the Black Wealth Project, which was all about reaching underserved communities and helping them understand the importance of real estate and overall financial literacy. But the son of Tracy, she was our angel. Philadelphia lost one of their greatest angels this week or this month. When I think about Tracy, there's a couple of things that come to mind. She always put people over money, even though she was a real estate broker. She always put community first, no matter what. And so for me, I always strive to live by those things, and I think those are lessons we can all live and pass on as we go forward. Thank you all for having us. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jimmy Williams. I'm also a member of the Black Wealth Project, but Tracy was a lifelong friend of mine. I've known Tracy over thirty-five plus years. We went to Ivy Leaf Middle School together, for those who remember Ivy Leaf, and that kind of shaped us to be who we were. But it's very difficult for me, but the one thing I want to say is this. Dr. King said everybody can be of service, everybody can be great because everybody can serve. And I think about that quote when it comes to Tracy, because she was always of service, always. On our last conversation, we were on the phone for two hours, and she just calls me out of the blue and says, "How can we get more of our black real estate professionals to work together? I need to figure that out." She said, "I'm going to figure that out." So we're talking, and then, you know, within the same conversation, she says, "I want to challenge you." She says, "Philadelphia is a place with so much talent. What can we do to keep our talent in Philadelphia?" Right? So these are the things that she would think about day in and day out. She was always of service. I mean, always of service. Last thing I want to say is this. A couple months ago, Tracy and I went to see Centers, the movie Centers that came out. And we leave the theater, and, you know, I'm talking about how much I love the movie. She says, "How can we use this to serve the community?" I said, "The movie?" She says, "We need to rent the theater out. This has to be a way to..." Everything was about serving the community and serving Philadelphia, so it makes sense that you guys honor her here today, and I wouldn't miss this for the world. You know, my prayers with her mother, you know, we love Tracy, and she was one of one. She's going to be surely missed, but thank you, guys.
Good morning, and thank you all. My name is Elizabeth Paris. I am the other half of real estate. I'm a loan officer with Cardinal Financial. And why that's important, Tracy and I met ten years ago through a client, and it wasn't just through working together that identified this as someone that I knew we were going to be involved in our lives forever. It was the budding friendship and the passion and the dedication to our community that we each held that we became thick as thieves very quickly. I've only been a loan officer for ten years. Tracy's been a Realtor for well over twenty, and we matched wits for days. And so something that stood out to me in our relationship and growing as friends and becoming family in a way is that Tracy managed to find herself not only as a support, but as the orchestrator, as the motivator, collaborating and assisting in so many ways. And so I want to say this, as one of our mutual colleagues, Mark Brown, could not be here, he's in California on his way to be for her memorial tomorrow, please remember that Tracy was the embodiment of be the change you want to see in the world. I ask that everyone who knew Tracy honor her by following the path she laid, lighting the way for others. The legacy she leaves is one of impact, integrity, community building, and purpose. The city of Philadelphia has lost a hero and gained an angel. Thank you.
We have Ibeen Anderson, Benita Cummings, May Jeremy Bladstein, Colin Kwan Hemler, Peter On, and Mo Rushdie also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Ibeen Anderson, and I am the president of Mesquine Originals, a brand that was incorporated here in Philadelphia on ten twenty-four nineteen ninety-nine. On behalf of the entire Mesquine Originals family, I want to extend our deepest thanks to City Council President Kenyatta Johnson and the entire Philadelphia City Council for this incredible resolution. Recognition today means the world to us, not just as a brand, but as a movement born right here in Philadelphia. Mesquine Originals was always more than clothing. It is wearable art, a voice for the unheard, and a symbol of creative rebellion. As we relaunch the brand in twenty twenty-five, we're bringing that same spirit into a new era, combining hand-painted fashion with cutting-edge technology like AI and blockchain, and re-engage in our community through art, education, and entrepreneurship. We were built by the city, and we're building again. With your support, we believe Mesquine can again inspire the world from right here in Philly. Thank you for believing in us, and thank you for helping us to do what Mesquine has always done, make art and fashion, make an impact, and make history. Thanks again.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Greetings, Council members. My name is Benita Cummings, Strawberry Mansion Community Concern and RCO. Testimony on two five zero five six eight. I rise today not just as a community advocate, but to speak directly to you as parents and as Philadelphians concerned about the future of your own children. Bill number two five zero five six eight, even as amended, burdens your own families. This bill allows developers to convert every vacant parcel into multifamily units appraised at six hundred thousand to over one million per building, not for community benefit, but for investor portfolios. But here is the truth, those inflated values raise assessments and property taxes on nearby single-family homes, including those owned by our seniors, many of whom, many of whom were lifelong public servants, teachers, nurses, transit workers. These elders often do not qualify for the low income or senior tax relief because they earn modest pensions. That means their property taxes go up, their children inherit debt, not wealth, and in many cases, the family is forced to exit or lose the home entirely. The bill is intergenerational harm disguised as housing policy. You are voting to make your own children poor before they turn fifteen by loading the city with debt and approving housing models that destroy protections meant to stabilize our neighborhoods. Let us also be clear, ignoring community input, bypassing zoning law, and excluding RCOs isn't just bad policy, it's a Title VI civil rights violation. This bill exposes the city to federal challenges for discriminating against black and brown neighborhoods under the false banner of affordable housing. I urge you, protect the people, not the developers. Reject or amend Bill number two five zero five six eight so that it does not rewrite our rights or jeopardize our future. A community like Strawberry Mansion, though not rich in income, is rich in amenities, open space, history, and cultural legacy. Under Bill number two five zero five six eight, neighborhoods like ours will remain permanently marginalized, because this bill removes our ability to shape what happens to our land. Without zoning protections and community input, we will never become the next Fairmont, Spring Garden, or Northwest. This bill ensures that decisions are made without us, over us, and against us. This is not housing justice, this is generational harm. Thank you for not taking my voice today and allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
We're talking about housing, housing, housing. My name's Jeremy Bladstein. But if we're talking about housing, it's an eight-hundred-million-dollar bold plan of the Move Initiative, Home Initiative, sorry. It's a, it's a great plan, but we just heard from the one-person RCO, from Jay Young's auntie, who's holding up fifty-seven fully-funded affordable units. Each and every one of you are stopping that. It is completely unacceptable that you're allowing one person to stop fifty-seven affordable units. The tax credits expire at the end of June. You are using taxpayer dollars to sue to stop housing from being built. It needs to stop. It is so unacceptable, and you can't say you're for affordable housing if you support this appeal. So I encourage each and every one of you, if you really care about affordable housing, to vote no. The last thing we're talking about is SEPTA. Raise your hand if you wrote SEPTA this year. This year. Yeah, we got this. Okay. Yeah, okay, Councilwoman Bass, look at that. SEPTA is crucial for cities. Everybody relies on it. Ride the ride. Fund SEPTA. Grow Philly to Tumili. Thank you.
We have Colin Kwan Hemler, Peter On, Mo Rushdie, Majana Julian, Kate Perez, Tenille Walker, Daniel Eisenberg, and Tess Filer also make their way to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Colin Kwan Hemler. I am a library assistant at King Sessing Library. I'm a member of District Council Thirty-three, and I urge Council to vote no against Resolution two five zero one nine six, two five zero one nine seven, because it's astonishing to me that the Free Library of Philadelphia is receiving no increase in funding, either in operating costs or capital costs. Flat funding is not going to fix all the issues we have. District Council members, I want you to listen closely to this list. Thirteen branches yesterday were closed yesterday due to staffing or cooling issues. Our HVAC systems are broken. That is Bustleton, Durham, Santor, Falls of Skookle, Fumo, Lilian Marrero, Ramonito Rodriguez, South Philly, Donatucci, Walnut Street West, and Welsh Road were all closed, and material pickup services are not adequate full services. We are so much to the communities. We are childcare, we are printing services, we are internet services, and when the branch itself is closed because we cannot safely open, because the temperature is way too high, people lose out, children in the community lose out. We need more funding for programming, for basic essentials like garbage bags. They are hard to come by, and nobody has answers. HVAC, again, security. We need higher wages, okay? District Council Thirty-three is the lowest-paid city workers. Municipal guards deserve so much more. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the City Council. Today, I'm testifying as a Germantown resident. In opposition to the proposed budget, it seems like the big money would organize people conveniently...
Please state your name for the record. Please state your name for the record.
Peter On. It seems like the big money would organize people conveniently and fast, but big money does not organize they purchase. The wealthy collaborate together while dividing the middle class and the vulnerable. By lifting people up from the middle, upper middle, and the middle of the socioeconomic strata, we need to lift from the bottom. A theologian, Dorothy Sorel, once quoted Bertolt Brecht, a German playwright, "There are many ways to kill. We can thrust a knife into somebody's belly or let him starve to death. We can withhold medication or treatment of an illness, or we can force someone to live in substandard housing. We can simply work someone to death, or drive into suicide, or send them to war. Very little of this is forbidden in our country." Let's add, or we can cut budget that supports mobile crisis responder units, or we can weaponize law enforcement and respond with lethal force by traumatizing and catastrophizing conflict and mental health crisis, or we can cut taxes from large corporations like Comcast and Arrowmark, or by giving landlords, developer, and lobbyists no transparency or accountability. I oppose this Philly version of the big, beautiful budget proposal.
Council President, Council Members, Madam Chair, thank you for your transparency. To our mayor, thank you for having the courage and energy to conduct all these town halls, last of them yesterday, finishing at nine PM, to transpire the enormous vision that you have. I'm here to testify on behalf of two five zero two one four five three zero one nine five two one two five two five and five two four. Everyone wants the city growing, a growing tax base, businesses opening up in the city, and the city's vulnerable, having resources to not only help them survive, but help them thrive. I look at the eight-hundred-million-dollar bond, which, when leveraged, will create two to three billion dollars worth of projects, repair projects, small and big. That in itself will bring over six to eight billion dollars of economic impacts to the city of Philadelphia. More tax collections, job creation. This bond program is in itself a growth tool for our city. Codifying tax reductions has never been done before. Many don't talk about this very important fact. This is big. This is huge. We are an old city. We are a city that has neighborhoods with little resources and an aging housing stock. Fixing these aging housing stock ensures that people can stay in their neighborhoods. We need safe homes, and we need affordable housing. That needs resources. This budget and the home program not only deals with programs that uses this tremendous bond, but the legislative packages that we saw that makes building homes easier makes the process streamlined. In the time where building permits are largely sharply down from two years ago, these legislative packages are crucial to see more building. We are looking forward to more packages in the fall and subsequent sessions, removing red tape and getting housing production on steroids, as our great mayor would say. We are taking steps in the right direction to achieve that. We need to see a diverse workforce. We need to stop middle-class black flight from our city by providing options like tourniquet, while providing a path for creation of the largest generational wealth production in the history of our city. Picture that, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in equity for each of two to three-thousand homes. That's close to a billion dollars in primarily black and brown people's generational wealth in this great city. At the end, I just want to say that we succeed with pragmatic solutions, and when everyone looks at the big picture and not just what's good from their own perspective. The mayor and council president just did that. Thank you very much.
Let's be respectful so we can hear everyone. We need to hear everyone speak. We need to hear everyone speak. So please, let's be respectful of everyone. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Hi, my name is Daniel Eisenberg. I serve as the pastor of St. John's Lutheran Church in Mayfair in District Number Six. I also serve as the dean of the Northeast Northwest Conference of Lutheran Churches in the Southeastern Pennsylvania Senate of the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America. I do all that stuff. And I am a volunteer organizer with Power Interfaith. And I stand in opposition to Bill two five zero one nine nine, in particular, the plan to repeal the BERT tax. We just had a... We just had a town hall for the first time that we hosted, and Councilmember Driscoll was present, and we had a very good meeting. And at that meeting, we heard a lot of stories of folks that are struggling, folks who are living in their cars. I shared a story of a parishioner who had a seizure because he's been rationing his seizure medication. We also host Feast of Justice, which feeds over five, excuse me, whoa, that went quick, 550 families every month. And they're doing less, have less resources to do more, they're struggling, having to turn people away, which is heartbreaking. My fear is that if we don't slow down on these tax cuts, we, that burden of making up that revenue, if it is made up, will fall on the people that are already struggling, like the people I love and serve.
We have Janice Julian. We have Janice Julian, then Kate Perez, Tanil Walker.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, thank you, Chairwoman Bass. Thank you so much for presiding today. I respectfully request a leave of abstinence for the remainder of today's session. I've missed a lot of graduations that I've been wanting to go to, and they have me speaking today, so I have to go to a few of them. But I just wanted, I had to come back and actually had to be here and vote proudly for the mayor's bills and budgets, as she's doing for housing and also for our budget. So I'd like to be recorded as voting yes on all the remaining bills and resolutions, including the mayor's budget and housing bill, and no on Bill Two Five Zero Zero Four Four A.
Thank you very much. Leave granted.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, Tess Filer, District One. I'm testifying opposed to Bill Two Five Zero One Nine Nine. I'm representing Power Interfaith, Arch Street United Methodist Church, our nonprofit, the Center Philadelphia, which is a daytime drop-in center for unhoused and unsheltered neighbors, as well as the RCO, Center City Organized for Responsible Development. I've spoken to dozens of people in these organizations, and we are all deeply concerned that if the BERT tax and wage taxes are cut, the burden will fall on already skyrocketing property taxes, leading to further displacement and added strain on our already strained homeowners and renters. And I especially think of the strain it will put on the unhoused and unsheltered people and the service providers who serve them, considering our drop-in center has had to, due to capacity, turn away 514 guests from March to May. Three months, and that's just our agency. So we're asking City Council to please slow down and consider the impacts of the BERT tax cuts and not pass any cuts. And if passed, we ask council to think seriously about a plan to replace our lost revenue. Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, can we get you to return to the podium? We need your name for the record. We need you to state your name for the record.
Tess Filer.
Thank you so much. Ms. Perez, please state your name for the record and proceed.
Kate Perez. It's day 102 of the Israeli occupation's complete blockade against Palestine, purposely starving millions to death and using aid distribution to murder civilians en masse. The IOF released their own drone footage of targeted strikes against children collecting flour. City bonds must have the stipulation that they cannot invest into apartheid states and explicitly cannot invest into companies operating within states maintaining illegal occupations. Solidarity to the thousands of people in Al-Arish, Egypt, today, on the road to Rafa with aid, even though Israel consistently bombs, kidnaps, drops chemicals on, and maims aid workers in Palestine. We can't allow weapons to leave our docks and pretend to be uninvolved. On Tuesday, PPD violently arrested citizens protesting the disgusting ICE kidnapping of five people that morning, videos of PPD actually kneeling on their necks. ICE announced that they're going to increase mass deportations with the backing of the armed National Guard. Don't give the cops more money to hurt us. We should be having nonstop emergency meetings for sanctuary city status. Announce the sanctuary city and an arms embargo against Israel. Free Palestine.
May we also have Kanan Rajah, Queen Judith Robinson, Carrie Rothman, Antoine Lewis, Megan Malkems, Kareem Sweeps, Park Frost, and Karen Jocelyn also make their way to the podium.
Good morning.
Tanil Walker. Good morning, everyone. My name is Tanil Walker, a proud resident of the Eighth District, Cindy Bass District, a devoted member at First United Methodist Church of Germantown. I'm here today to share my reality. I face housing insecurity, from homelessness on the streets with my son to barely keeping a roof over our heads. I now pay $1,500 a month, a price most people can't afford. Despite working 80 to 100 hours a week is exhausting, 12 to 16-hour shifts, I'm left scrambling just to cover bills and support my family. I stand before you today, not as a victim, but as a voice, a call for change. Affordable housing should be a right, a safe, stable haven for every family. Let my story be a catalyst for action so that no one else has to endure this struggle. Thank you for allowing me to share my testimony.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Kanan Rajah, and I am here on behalf of Children First and our health team. I want to first thank Councilmember Ahmad and this body for taking action on the youth vaping crisis. We support the Vape Free Futures Act because this bill protects kids from the harms of vaping. According to the Philadelphia Department of Public Health, in 2024, 38% of Philadelphian youth reported trying e-cigarettes, and 19% currently use them. Rates are highest amongst Black and Latino youth in underserved neighborhoods, deepening existing health disparities. This crisis is not abstract for me, it is personal. While working in high schools as a public health intern, I facilitated health education sessions. Nearly every kid in my class admitted that they had tried vaping. Many believed e-cigarettes are safer and less addictive than cigarettes, and most were completely unaware that vapes contain even higher levels of nicotine than cigarettes. These kids were misinformed. Thankfully, we know what can lessen vaping in kids. Graphic warning labels and targeted education have helped drive an 86% decrease in youth tobacco use from 1997 to 2021. This bill's warning sign requirement builds on this evidence-based intervention. Moreover, it channels 50% of the fines back into youth vaping prevention and education programs. Council members, the Vape Free Futures Act protects our kids from the harmful effects of nicotine addiction, and it sends a clear message. Philadelphia is committed to a vape-free future, and it's committed to protecting its youth from the harms of nicotine addiction. Thank you for considering this critical legislation. We urge you to vote yes.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Rothman. Thank you for having me testify today. I'm here to testify on Bill Two Five Oh Five Six Six and Five Six Eight. So I'm here to represent Habitat for Humanity Philadelphia, where we build and preserve affordable homes for low-income homeowners. We're also proud members of the Philadelphia Coalition for Affordable Communities. So we do this work throughout the city, you know, maintaining homeownership and creating homeownership for low-income families, moving us to a city where everyone has a safe, stable, and decent place to live. We also have a specific focus on advancing Black homeownership because we know that's the way to bridge generational wealth gaps. City councils' housing investments have a powerful impact, and we urge you to adopt the Bold Home Plan that builds, restores, and preserves affordable housing for those most vulnerable. We support the main vision, but we have to say, we urge you to cap its support at those making no more than 80% AMI, and we'd like to see more details about the plan. We also urge stronger focus on the programs that will substantially expand the supply of affordable housing by creating new units that are accessible to low-income families and households, and also preserving naturally occurring affordable housing that's already serving folks. This includes rental and homeownership opportunities. We know that prioritizing these strategies will ensure that public investment have a lasting effect on housing. We have other recommendations, but they're, they've been in the record already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. My name is Meg Malkemus, and I'm a member of Power Interfaith who lives, works, and worships in North Philly, testifying against Bill Number Two Five Zero One One Nine and the proposed elimination of the BERT tax, which, if passed, would result in a loss of $2 billion in tax revenue over the next decade. And as an employee of a federally qualified health center in North Philly where the majority of patients are insured by Medicaid, we're terrified at how federal tax cuts will devastate our community. As someone who relies on SEPTA, I'm afraid of how impending SEPTA cuts will disrupt my ability to work. As an organizer, I'm worried for the people I organize with who do not know how they will continue to afford rent. And I'm here today because I'm afraid of how eliminating taxes on big businesses like Comcast and Aramark, this city's third-largest source of tax revenue, will make these crises worse. You don't need to be a tax expert to understand that the loss of this funding can only either mean a decrease in the resources we already do not have enough of, or an increase in the price of property taxes we already cannot afford. It pains me to think of the schools that could be built, the parks that could be played in, the students that could be fed, the libraries that could be open if these funds were left untouched. And it concerns me that in a moment when our city needs to be protected from a corporate agenda at the federal level, we've been offered a budget that'll make this even more catastrophic. I urge every member of council to slow down on these proposed tax cuts or find a new source of tax revenue so we can get the resources we need without everyday people having to pay the cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Antoine Lewis, Kareem Sweeps, Park Frost, Karen Jocelyn, May Dawn Harris, Janet White, Reverend Michael Caine, Debbie Robinson, and Rosetta Callaway also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, council, City Council, the great City Council. Good morning, residents. My name is Kareem Sweats. I am a resident of Honey Park, 43rd Ward, a comedian from our division, 25th Division, also a representative of Power Interfaith. I am here today to basically, to, I do support the bill, the bill, uh, sorry, Two Five Zero One Nine Nine, but I do not represent, I do not support the $700 million tax cut. And the reason is because the core problem is that this tax cut, this proposed tax cut is basically, it appears to prioritize short-term political gain. Also, it boosts up big businesses. It do not represent any residential, essential services. It actually reduces residential services, some that I need, some that everyone else need, like SEPTA. The thing is beeping, I'm done. Oh, and yeah, that's it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Antoine Lewis. I'm a member of One PA and election captain. We're pleased.
Okay, yeah, I can't hear you.
We are pleased that City Council and the mayor has allocated $800 million towards our city's housing crisis. There are too many underserved residents in our neighborhoods that are being forced out of their communities by raising housing costs. If we are going to address the crisis of gentrification, we have to get the details of the housing plan right. Low-income home repair programs are critical. Let's preserve our neighborhoods. The proposed budget for the Home Initiative actually reduces funding for home repair programs. If there is not enough help for me, how are we helping residents of Philadelphia? Follow the money, confront the power.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is, I'm sorry. My name is Dawn Harris, and I'm the broker and owner of Keys and Deeds Realty. We proudly serve home buyers and sellers across Philadelphia. I would like to quickly say that I'm sending love to the family of Tracy Powell, who is well-respected in the community and, of course, a fellow broker. I'm here to speak today on behalf of the many residents of the city, especially those we haven't had yet the honor to serve, who are working hard every day to achieve one of the most fundamental goals in life, and that is homeownership. We are well aware of the financial pressures facing today's buyers. Home prices are up, interest rates are up, interest premiums, I'm sorry, insurance premiums are up, and now a proposed increase to the city's transfer tax would push things even further out of reach. I want to be clear that I've examined this proposal from many different angles, looking for a way that this increase might be absorbed or mitigated by buyers or sellers, and unfortunately, there's no clean pivot here. Some buyers don't have the flexibility to raise their purchase price in order to increase the seller's assist to accommodate such an increase. And so we're raising numbers just to taste the same outcome, but in doing so, we risk stopping the deal altogether. This proposed tax increase may seem small on paper, but its ripple effect is real. It can delay dreams, disqualify buyers, and in some cases, stop a home purchase from happening altogether. Is my mic ready to go off? I'll close in saying this, that I'm urging you to reconsider, and let's not penalize the very people we should be empowering, whether they are buying their first home or selling the only one they've ever known. Let's keep the door to homeownership open for all Philadelphians.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
We have Janet White, Reverend Michael Caine, Debbie Robinson, Rosetta Callaway, May Emily Doley, Janet White, Loretta Payne, Mark Clinsey, and Suzanne Stone also make their way to the podium.
Hello, my name is Janet White, and I'm asking you to vote yes on Bill Two Five Zero Three Three One. I am a member of Philly Thrive and a resident of District Eight, Cindy Bass. I'm also a former mother of five daughters, 20 grandchildren, and three great-grand, and a former nurse in home health. I lived in Magnolia News, Germantown, and I moved in apartment 2018. Over the past seven years, I experienced multiple instances of poor maintenance, unsafe conditions. When I moved in there, cracks, windows, sills, ants, roaches, anything. I even had rodents running around apartments, also had water damages, found after not having heat for entire winter, and after putting multiple maintenance requests, I was fed up. I was fed up. And after four, four years of living like this, I called L and I. Next thing you know, eviction process and everything. Thank you. I have a lot to say, but thank you for allowing me to share my story, and I hope that you would do the right thing and support low-income residents for over corporate landlords and developers. We need you to vote yes today and to fund any displacement fund and build the land and the home program, and thank you very much.
My name is Michael Caine. I'm the pastor at Old First Reformed United Church of Christ at Fourth and Race and the co-chair of Power Interfaith. We're here today, thank you, we're here today to talk against Bill Two Five Zero One Nine Nine, getting rid of the business tax. I spent the last three months talking to about 35 of the homeless and food insecure people we serve each week, and they agree with me that if individuals pay tax in Philly, businesses should pay tax. We're really worried, what are we going to do without $700,000, $700 million worth of income when income revenue from DC is drying up? Finally, I'll use my own example. I live, I'm a pastor of a church in Councilwoman Squillis' district, but I live in Councilwoman Young's district. Currently, my taxes went up from $4,000 to $10,000 a year. I'm not homeless, but I'm not the richest person in this city either. Currently, my house is valued for taxes at more than I could sell it for. We need to figure out how to fund this city, fund homeless services, fund services for all of us, so that the businesses don't do well and all of us else suffer. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Cal Floyd, and I speak on behalf of my friend Debbie Robinson. We are members of Philly Thrive. I am commenting on Bill Two Five Oh Three Three One, and I am a resident of District Two, a renter, and a member of Philly. I remember growing up in a house that was not visible. It had so much mold that it caused me and my siblings to have, no one would help my single mother make the repairs. We need every, we need, even though she was trying to get support and live in a decent place. Now, 50 years later, my friend Mary's mother is still facing the same challenge. She can literally see the sky. She can literally see the sky through her roof. There is too much money in the city of Philadelphia to be living like this, with people helping the city grow and we make money for the city. We put you in office because you had told us that you would help us. We want you to do the right thing. Please vote yes on Bill 250331 to establish and end displacement fund and help make sure that people live in safety up there. The city needs to be about us and not the big landlords and developers. The current bill does not affect what we need. I hope the city will fund bills to last and anti-displacement funding and the home placement this fall. Imagine that your family is going through this right now, and how would you feel? Would you want to help them? You can help them by vote yes today and provide more funding moving forward. And also seniors are having a hard time too. Please help the seniors too that's going through this too, and myself, and my family are going through asthma and going through this too and the same thing. So make sure you help us with this bill, and please vote yes for 250331. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
We have Rosetta Callaway, Emily Doley, Janet White, Loretta Payne, Mark Clinsey, Suzanne Stone, May Seneca Grant, Melissa Mont, Aor Howell, Robert Vance, and Gregory Allen also make their way to the podium.
My name is Rosetta Callaway. I'm here to talk about 25011. Please vote again. I'm a member of the Church of Provision of Grace Rural Mission Church. And spreading the rumor of this bill is something that's very important. I noticed that people always have good news, and when they have good news, they go out and spread the good news. Ms. Cindy Bass, I went out and voted for you because you're in my district, and I heard the good news about you. But the news about this bill, who has heard about it? Not many. Everyone I go to and talk about this bill, this $700 billion that are being taken away from the city of Philadelphia because there's no longer taxes for big companies? Are you kidding? We are the little man. We need the tax money. There's so many things in the city that needs to be fixed, and who is fixing them? We had the money, how is the money going to be replaced? We would like to know that. But at this time, I want to close with, it's a saying, when good news is spread around, people are happy and cheerful to learn of it. But when you take news and slide it under the table and want to pass it by, what kind of news is that? Rosetta Callaway, power.
I am a mother, a grandmother, and I've lived in Philadelphia since 2007. I'm here to urge you to vote on the Right to Relocation Bill 255, 250331. I spent years in a dangerous, pest-infested apartment where the walls leaked sewage and rodents ran free. I ended up in the hospital with pneumonia and now live with chronic heart and lung conditions. I did not choose this. It happened because my landlord ignored every single warning sign and the system allowed it. This is why Right to Relocation matters. It gives renters like me a way out when landlords fail to meet basic health and safety standards. But one bill isn't enough. We need to see Mayor Parker's home plan include funding for relocation and for the repairs that help struggling homeowners stay in their homes. Displacement isn't just a renters' issue, it affects entire neighborhoods. We also need to be clear, renters need the full package of protections. This is just one piece of the Safe and Healthy Homes Act. We will be back in the fall to fight for the other two bills, and we will not stop until they pass.
Please state.
And while you enjoy your summer with your families, I want you to see me. I want you to picture my face when you sit down for a meal or watch your grandchildren play, because people like me aren't getting that time. We're living with physical and emotional consequences of landlords who put profit over people in a system that allowed them to do so for far too long. Vote yes. We are not going away, and we need your leadership now. Thank you.
Please state your name again for the record. Please state her name, have her state her name again for the record, please.
Melissa Montz.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Clinsey, and I am commenting on Bill 250331. I am a member of Philly Thrive and a resident of District 2. I am a renter on a fixed income. We need all Philadelphians, not just some, not just a few, but all Philadelphians to have a safe and healthy home. We will no longer be the silent majority anymore. As you see, we are speaking out. We need you to vote yes today in order to establish an anti-displacement fund for renters to be able to move out of unlivable conditions. We need more protections for renters against retaliation and against displacement. Please put your low-income, senior, and disabled constituents over the profit of corporate landlords and developers. This year's budget doesn't reflect these values, but you have an opportunity to correct that this fall. We need $10 million for Built to Last and $5 million for the anti-displacement fund in the Home Initiative. We are sharing our voices, and we need you to listen. Don't be the blind leading the blind. We need you to step up and do your job, because we are doing ours. Thank you.
We have Seneca Grant, Aor Howell, Robert Vance, Gregory Allen, Maylin Landis, Sierra Freeman, Sherri Brown, Abraham Pardo, and Jacob Zychik also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, City Council. Thanks for letting us speak today. My name is Suzanne Stone, and I am the principal of Stone Sherick Consulting Group. I am honored to testify today in strong support of Bill Number 250568, the Home Initiative. This bold and unprecedented investment represents a critical step forward in addressing Philadelphia's deepening housing crisis. At Stone Sherick, we work with developers all across the city to preserve and develop new affordable housing across. We have seen firsthand the transformative nature that a small-city investment can make. We leverage hundreds of millions of private dollars to build deeply, deeply affordable housing for the city's most vulnerable. I look forward to working in partnership with the mayor, City Council, and both nonprofit and for-profit developers to rise to this occasion. I urge you to vote yes on the Home Initiative. Thanks for your time and your leadership.
Good afternoon, and then thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am the deputy director of Neighborhood Gardens Trust, and I'm a proud resident of Germantown in the 8th District, but I'm here today to advocate for another community and voice my support for Resolution Number 250609 in District 3. This bill involves the transfer of land to Neighborhood Gardens Trust for the permanent preservation of summer-winter community garden in Palton Village. This site is home to an active, well-loved garden, making an impact and cultivating community in Palton and nearby Mantua and Drexel University, all since 1976, which is older than me. The land beneath this well-loved garden was in jeopardy of being lost to development, and we want to thank and applaud Councilmember Jamie Gautier and her office for working with the community and NGT in navigating this complicated land and preservation process. Protecting community gardens is part of neighborhood preservation, and we look forward to working with all the other members of City Council to preserve longtime community gardens in your districts. These are places where people can grow food, flowers, and community, and they deserve your, our protection and investment into the future. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Seneca Grant, and I would like to say thank you to Councilmembers for hearing all of our testimonies today, Madam Chair of the Housing Committee for our hearing that we had before, and especially the Honorable Nicholas Aorork, who was our bill sponsor. Thank you, sir. You are forever in our debt, and we will continue to have you in our thoughts and prayers and your family. Again, my name is Seneca Grant. I'm a resident of Bentley Manor and Oden Property in West Oak Lane. I've been living there since November 2023. I'm a born and raised Philadelphian, and I've been here my entire life throughout, between my family and myself. Last November, Ellen and I came and filled the two Oden properties in the cluster here, Mount West and Bentley Manor, and marked my building as unsafe. They filled them for having the wrong kind of fire doors and a lot of other issues, including the bricks and the facades, amongst other things like infestation. And that inspection helped, but because they started doing the work to make the repairs. But what if the conditions had been worse and the building marked unsafe for human habitation? Me and my neighbors would have nowhere to go. That is why I'm urging you and pleading with you to vote yes on Bill 250331, the Right to Relocation, because renters need this. It will be set up, it would set up an anti-displacement to prevent Philadelphians from losing housing in their building, if their building is condemned. But the program needs to be funded as well, which is why we hope to see funding from the mayor's home plan for the anti-displacement fund for renters as well as to repair program, repair programs to prevent homeowners from being displaced as well. Repair programs like Built to Last. Renters need all three pieces of legislation that we, that we are a part of, the Safe and Healthy Homes Act, and we look to meet with you guys again in November to further this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am Dr. Gregory J. Allen, president and CEO of Overbrook West Neighbors, a nonprofit community development corporation founded in 2018 to serve the Overbrook neighborhood in which I grew up and currently live. I want to share my gratitude for all of City Council and its work to support the mission of Philadelphia's neighborhoods, business corridors, and CDCs with special appreciation for my 4th District Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr., Councilmember Jamie Gautier, and Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson. Congratulations to the students and staff of Overbrook High School who were represented here today. This morning, I offer public comment in support of the budget bills for the Office of Clean and Green Initiatives and the Commerce Department. We have done lots of quality-of-life issues in Overbrook. Naturally, this means we did lots of cleanups, lots and lots of cleanups, and none of this would have been possible without the unwavering support of Director Carlton Williams and his teams at the Streets Department, now the Office of Clean and Green Initiatives, and Acting Commerce Department Commissioner Karen Fegley. Before and now, they've always come through for Overbrook. Our neighborhood streets, including alleyways, driveways, and business corridors are cleaner than ever. Finally, with their support, the Lancaster Avenue Business Corridor is prepared to develop strategic planning and targeted investment from the city and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It is for these reasons and so many more, I share my unreserved support of the Office of Clean and Green Initiatives and the Commerce Department budget bills. With their continued support, we will be able to continue our mission of keeping Overbrook safe, clean, and organized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sherri Brown, and I am here to oppose Bill 250621. I have lived in Strawberry Mansion for 69 years, and it is appalling that out of the 57 units that Penrose is scheduled to start construction on, in a one- to-two-block area, Councilman Young is focused on one single pocket park. Couple months ago, over 400 people came together at Waylon Temple Baptist Church and testified in favor of the rebuild project at the Cecil B. Moore Library. At the end of that meeting, Senator Street and Representative Harris both stood up and said that the people have spoken. Yet, Councilman Young, you swore to support and serve your constituents, but have chosen to continue to be disrespectful and ignore us. It has been one year since rebuild was approved, and approximately eight months passed the time that the ribbon should have been cut at the groundbreaking ceremony. It is unknown how the federal tariffs will affect the cost of materials and constructions for this renovation, but what we do know is that we cannot afford to wait another year or six months. Or, Councilman Young, is this what you're counting on? Are you, do you want the money to run out? Okay, we implore you to sign the notice to proceed so that the administration can begin the rebuild renovation by putting the project to bid. It's time to do the right thing, and we would like for you to do the right thing right now. Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Sierra Freeman. I'm here as the lead organizer for Brewery Town Shardswood Neighborhood Coalition, or BSNC Philly, or just BSNC, as a member organization with Alliance for Just Philadelphia, an advocate for the work that the citywide friends of are doing, and I'm here to speak on Bill Number 250196. I also want to take a moment to offer healing energy to Tracy Powell's family and healing energy to Tracy Powell as she travels to the ancestral realm. You may be wondering why a member of a neighborhood group is here making testimony on behalf of the budget and with neighborhood concerns. Frankly, initially, I would be too. You see, all neighborhoods are connected to wards, and all wards are connected to a district. All districts are connected to this entire city of Philadelphia. My neighborhood, the 29th Ward, 5th District, and the city of Philadelphia, needs your help and support today with the campaign to save the Cecil B. Moore Library. We've done all that we can to see that this library is renovated immediately and becomes the beautiful 21st century third space we know that it can be. Amongst those things that we've done include a town hall, where we've had nearly 400 people attend. They also include a number of different petitions and surveys and canvassing that we've done. Our first survey, 159 responses, 46, "Build a new library if we have the money," 113, "Renovate now." Survey Number Two, 80% Brewery Town residents, 425 responses, 330, "Renovate now," 85, "Renovate now, seek more funding." Our after-town hall survey, 50- 59.1% live in the neighborhoods that the library serves, 52.7% live in 19121, the same zip code as the library, 92.5% want to see the rebuild project begin ASAP. So we are here asking you, Councilman Young, to sign the Notice to Proceed so that we can move forward with the Cecil B. Moore Library renovation. I also want to say, we need safe, healthy homes. We need, we need these large corporations to pay birth taxes. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
We have Aurora Howell and Robert Vance. We have Aurora Howell, Robert Vance, Lynn Landis, Abraham Pardo, Jacob Zajcik, Mayo Bonahagans, Khalif Alexander, Robin Heinecke, General Muti A. Ajamu Azaboro, and Karen Abney make their way to the podium.
Yes, please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Abraham Reyes Pardo. I am the Vice President of Housing at the Urban League of Philadelphia. I'm here to comment in support of Bill 250568. The bill doesn't only allow for the continuity of housing programs that serve various specific and critical purposes, but it does it in a very particular moment in history. Private sector-led first-time homebuyer programs are disappearing. Tangled titles continue to disproportionately afflict the lives of Black and Brown families. Naturally occurring affordable housing is scarce. Housing insecurity due to market speculation continues to afflict the lives of many renters, and a housing stock that isn't getting any younger. I wish this process was fueled by good intentions, but without a sizable intentional misuse of funding and the city leading the path, thousands of families will be at risk of being either displaced or homeless. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Jacob Zajcik, on behalf of the American Heart Association, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment on the prevalence of electronic cigarettes and youth vaping in our city. The American Heart Association is deeply concerned about the prevalence of e-cigarette use by the kids of Philadelphia. 38% of youths have tried, and 19 currently use vaping products. Each year, the tobacco industry sells over $300 million worth of their deadly products in our city. 74% of e-cigarette sales are flavored products, and research has shown that most teens start using these tobacco-flavored products. These products are appealing to young people, and many mistakenly believe that they are less harmful. The American Heart Association would like to reiterate that there is no such thing as a safe tobacco product. We would like to thank Councilmember Ahmad for championing these efforts in Bill 250213 that would strengthen penalties for retailers that sell these harmful products to youth and would ensure that 50% of all of those fines collected would be allocated to youth e-cigarette prevention and education programs in our city. Thank you, Councilmember Ahmad, and thank you, everyone in Philadelphia City Council.
Good morning. Obona Hagens, President of the Philadelphia Reparations Coalition for American Freedmen. As you consider the revised five-year financial plan, let it be known that while you find millions for everything else in this city, you've deliberately left the American Freedmen out of your budget and out of your consciousness. The reparations task force is now defunct, and its silence speaks volumes. Philadelphia wants nothing to do with reparations. You create agencies for every group, but not for the descendants of the emancipated. Even Juneteenth, now a holiday, has been reduced to a hollow performance with no structural repair. Meanwhile, the Philadelphia Reparations Coalition for American Freedmen, my organization, has been doing the real agency work, educating, organizing, and uplifting this city's freedmen community for the past three years with no support. If you're passing a financial plan, then include us, the Philadelphia Reparations Coalition for American Freedmen. At the very least, subsidize the work we are already doing on your behalf. And I don't appreciate the person who introduced this task force. When I speak, she walks out. Gauthier, Obona Hagens, over and out.
Thank you for your testimony.
So, good morning, everyone. My name is Khalif Alexander. I am here as an organizer for Juneteenth. I decided to speak about the city of Philadelphia's five-year plan, and I looked at the plan, and I believe that there need to be additional revisions. One of those revisions is this. We're looking at the lack of adequate funding to specifically harm communities. That harmed community is Black Americans, or, as my buddy just previously stated, the emancipated, the descendants, the freedmen. Now, when we're looking at that, right? You know, we're discussing housing today. I seen a fellow from a community development corporation. And one of the things that we proposed over a year and some is the development of an Office for Freedmen Affairs that focuses on these initiatives. Housing, it focuses on. It focuses on a genealogy, it focuses on. It focuses on community development. But you know, one thing that we haven't talked about, Juneteenth. There's organizations receiving lots of funding for Juneteenth, and they aren't a historically Juneteenth organization like mine. My organization's been around for six or seven years, and we're looking at the lack of adequate funding. Well, if we had this office, then we would have proper funding to grassroots, Juneteenth organizations who do community-based work to enhance the spirit. What you call that, you call that a cultural celebration. You call that lineage specificity. You call that cooperative economics. These are the things that we focus on. So I thank you, and I hope you all have a good day.
Thank you for your testimony.
We have Robin Heinecke, General Muti A. Ajamu Azaboro, Karen Abney. May Alina Chandy, Abia Thomas, Dewad Bay, Linnea Bond, and Teresa Howell also make their way to the podium.
Councilmember Bass and Councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I speak against Bill 250199. My name is Robin Heinecke. I'm the pastor of the Arch Street United Methodist Church in the 1st District, where Councilman Squill is our district person. But I'm a 32-year resident of the great 7th Council District, where Councilmember Lazada is our councilperson. I live on the 4200 block of Paul Street in the Frankfurt neighborhood. My own property taxes went from $900 to $3,000 in this latest round. While I have the privilege to be able to pay that, many of my neighbors do not. I am severely concerned about them. But today, I stand also as a member of Power Interfaith, speaking in relationship to the business tax reduction. Ask these questions before you vote. What if the first test of any economic policy were this? Does it reduce poverty and create racial equity? What happens when we invest in tax cuts for corporations and businesses rather than investing in schools, libraries, affordable housing, and the untapped genius of youth? Can a city truly flourish if a quarter of its people remain cut off from economic opportunity? And then why repeat tax strategies that after 20 years have failed to lift our neighbors out of poverty? And whose future are we really funding when over 80% of the jobs that these tax cuts purport to create will go to folks outside of the city or newcomers, not our underserved, underemployed, and unemployed neighbors? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Let him cook. All the church say amen. I'm here to... My name is General Muti Adjemo Saburu. General is my title. Muti Adjemo Saburu is my name. I'm here to oppose 250528. Not so much on the merits, as again, once again, the language. The language is just cryptic. The average Jane and John Q. Public cannot read it. They don't know what's going on in the city, and they need to know what's going on because it has to do with our future, the fiscal budget, and it's talking about what we're going to do in the future, all the way up to 2031. So I think this is extremely important. I found this sign. Even though I'm from the great state of North Philadelphia, city of Richard Island, I actually live in Germantown now. And this sign I found on the ground, on the fence, taped to the fence. And it says, "Notice: Pesticide Application." Do you know what Roundup is, Councilwoman Bass?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, in our community in Germantown, they're spraying the foliage with Roundup, which is a cancer-causing agent. Why is the city of Philadelphia, why is the mayor's office allowing them to spray cancer-causing agents on our foliage where we have to live and breathe, and our children play, and our animals walk? That's going to create cancer clusters. Those people, which are predominantly Black and Brown neighborhoods, are going to get cancer, are going to have to pay the hospital bills, then going to die, and then the developers are going to come in and take their homes. And this is about gentrification. And so this is nonsense. This is genocide. I want to thank you for your time, and we have to do something about this. We have to stop this immediately. Thank you very much, and you have an absolutely magnificent day.
So I do want to state for the record that in 2020, my office, we introduced the HOPS bill to stop spraying toxic chemicals on city property. And just this past week, Councilman Jim Harity revived that conversation with the administration and to come up with a plan because it had not been executed by the administration yet. So, thank you, Councilman Harity. And thank you. Yes. So, Councilman Harity just had a hearing this week to talk about that with the administration to get action on it.
Good morning, everyone. I am Alina Chandy, ACD College for Municipal Employment Program graduate from the Computer Support Specialist Pathway. As a young adult, this program really helped me to start a career. Along with the theoretical classes, they also provided self-skill classes and paid internship with the city, which really helped me to understand what it's really like to work with the city, met a lot of great people, and I loved it. All above, this program is completely free, no stress, and we do get stipends too. I would definitely recommend CCME program for the individuals who are looking to start their career or change their career. I really want to thank Mayor Parker, the City Council, and CCP for creating this program and the economic opportunity provided by this program to the residents. Thank you.
Your name again for the record?
Alina Chandy.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Abia Thomas. I'm a student at the Community College of Philadelphia and currently enrolled in the City College for Municipal Employment's Healthcare Pathway. As a CCME student, I'm beyond grateful for the mayor's initiative and City Council's support in expanding access for economic opportunities for us with this first-in-the-nation workplace model. Having a parent currently working in our city's healthcare center, I've seen and heard so much about the importance of reinvesting in our city and working towards our future. And CCME is already making that kind of impact. With each step in my journey and with the support of an incredible team, I'm excited and confident in my application of municipal healthcare and making a meaningful impact in my community, just like my mom. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Howell.
Afternoon.
I first want to say thank you to the Housing Committee. We appreciate your consideration of all the bills in the Safe Healthy Homes Act, your unanimous decision to pass the Right to Relocation Bill, and your commitment to funding proactive inspections. We're here today to make sure the Right to Relocation Bill is passed into law and to make sure that it is fully funded through the Mayor's Home Plan so that it is not just an empty promise. Please remember, these are people like us who are disabled, low-income, that are being taken advantage of by these egregious corporate landlords. We, yes, we're renters, but we want safe, healthy homes, just like, I'm sure, everyone in City Council has. Yes, we're renters, but we want to build community too. And we want to be treated like you would treat your own family. And we're screaming, "We need your help. Will you help us?" We hope you pass this Right to Relocation Bill today and that you pass and fully fund all of the Safe and Healthy Home Acts this fall to give renters the protections they desperately need. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
We have Dewad Bay, Linnea Bond, May Sam Liu, Jasmine Henderson, Harvey Hurdle, Trina Benjamin, Ashia Richardson, and Vinaya Fout also make their way to the podium.
Hi, my name's Linnea Bond. It's okay, everyone says it wrong. I was here the other day to hear Isaiah Thomas emphasize, "We're in the middle of so many crises: SEPTA, housing, violence. Why are we then cutting taxes for big businesses that can most afford to pay for the basic infrastructure we all depend on?" Specifically, I agree with many people who have reminded us that repairs of old housing stock are essential, which is why I'm worried that the $800 million Home Initiative doesn't provide enough funding for repairs for the people who most need it. In addition, we need the three bills in the Safe Healthy Homes Act. It was heartbreaking to see only one move forward last week. I'm a renter lucky with a great landlord, but I live next door to a landlord with multiple violations. No one should live in those conditions. But it should also be mentioned that no one, no homeowner, landlord, or renter wants to share a wall with a landlord who has mold and illegal furnace and gas leaks that they tell their tenants to ignore. Thank you. These are protections for all of us.
My name is Dawud Bay. Good afternoon. First and foremost, I want to thank the members of the Philadelphia City Council for your tireless work and dedication to moving this city forward. A special thank you to Council President Kenyatta Johnson for his leadership and his deep commitment to the communities we all serve. I also want to recognize each and every council member for creating this space to have this important conversation. I'm here standing in full support of Mayor Sherrell Parker's Home Ownership Opportunity Made Easy Initiative. This is not just a program. It is a lifeline for working families, for aspiring homeowners, and for neighborhoods that have waited far too long to see meaningful investment. Homeownership is one of the most powerful tools we have to create generational wealth, stabilize communities, and restore pride in our blocks. It is more than just brick and mortars. It's about giving people the dignity of a key to their own home and the power to shape their own futures. But we must also talk about the urgency of this moment. Every small landlord, every developer, and every contractor should be paying attention. This housing crisis is real. The construction industry is facing a workforce shortage. Longtime landlords are walking away because they feel unprotected. Developers are slowing down due to delays, and small contractors are struggling to keep pace. We don't have the luxury of waiting. We need jobs. We need jobs. We need jobs. We need apprenticeships. We need pathways for young people to enter trades. We need policies to protect individuals who are doing the work, those who are investing their time, resources, and lives in rebuilding this city from the ground up. I am proud to be doing that work through the Fine Print Construction and the Dawud Bay Junior Training Academy, and I stand ready to work with all of you to ensure that this initiative succeeds. The future of Philadelphia is dependent upon it. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Asia Richardson. I'm here to advocate for Bill 250196, Fiscal Year 2026 Budget. Again, my name is Asia Richardson. I am the proud owner of Indian Princess Hair, a luxury hair extension brand specializing in premium, unprocessed, chemical-free Indian hair. I want to begin and express my heartfelt thanks to Mayor Parker for your bold vision and unwavering commitment to making Philadelphia the safest, cleanest, greenest big city in America with access to economic opportunity for all. I also want to thank the members of City Council and the dedicated employees. I also want to thank the members of City Council and the dedicated employees of City, of the City of Philadelphia for your continued service and leadership. I am excited for the passage of the Fiscal Year of 2026 Budget and the five-year plan for the City of Philadelphia. Mayor Parker's One Philly 2.0 Budget includes proposed funding to expand the Department of Commerce Mayor's Business Action Team, which has been so supportive to my business. As a solo entrepreneur, navigating the challenges of a growing business can feel very overwhelming, but the support of the Mayor's Business Action Team and the financial support programs for the Department of Commerce, Indian Princess Hair has been able to take major steps forward in growth. With more funding from the One Philly 2.0 Budget, one of the meaningful outcomes is that the Department of Commerce will be able to expand the Business Navigation Unit within the Mayor's Business Action Team, which are specialists who help individual businesses resolve complex challenges and navigating city regulations, including licensing and permits. This funding will support the Mayor's Business Action Team in providing personalized assistance in multiple languages and to entrepreneurs for all aspects of doing business in Philadelphia while hosting successful monthly workshops. I have gained so much knowledge from attending these monthly events and reaching out for help. Their dedication to supporting small businesses like mine is not just appreciated, it's a transformative experience. Thank you to the Parker Administration for your commitment to creating a business-friendly government that delivers efficient customer service experiences and makes it easier to navigate city permit and licensing processes. Thank you.
My name is Vinaya Faut. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Vinaya Faut, and I'm a proud, one of the proud owners of Catherine's Cake Salon, where all of our cake items are made with love and made from scratch, and it's from the West Oak Lane section of Philadelphia. I am grateful to be in business and doing business in Philadelphia for almost five years. I am pleased to support Bill Number 250196, the passage of the Fiscal Year 2026, FY26 Budget, and five-year plan for the City of Philadelphia. Mayor Parker's One Philly 2.0 Budget includes proposed major funding that will help the Department of Commerce expand multiple initiatives, including increased funding to local business service organizations to provide direct classroom and one-on-one consulting to assist Philadelphia micro-business owners and entrepreneurs, increased funding for businesses through our program like Philadelphia Business Lending Network Incentive Grant, Storefront Improvement Program, Small Business Catalyst Fund, and Commercial Real Estate Acquisition Loan Program. I know firsthand the positive impact from the Department of Commerce. I am one of the proud recipients of In Store Program and also the Storefront Improvement Program, which has helped my business as far as beautification and also growth. I am a full supporter of the expansion of these programs through Mayor Parker's One Philly 2.0 Budget to help businesses access funding, personalize assistance, and grow their businesses. Thank you to the Parker Administration for your commitment to enhancing access to economic opportunity for entrepreneurs across the city. As One Philly, a united city, we can continue to help everyone achieve their dreams with a great quality of life. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Trina Benjamin. Greetings to you, Council President. So my name is Trina Worrell Benjamin, and I am the owner of TWB Cleaning Contractors, and we provide commercial cleaning, public space cleaning, landscaping, and pressure washing. And I'm here today to speak on the Bill 250196, particularly for the TCB, Green and Clean and the Commerce Department. When I started TWB over a decade ago, I was commissioned to help the vulnerable population of Philadelphia, the unemployed, the underemployed, and the returning citizens and retirees. Because contrary... Hello? Contrary to popular belief, we have residents in our city that have worked 20 and 30 years. And once they retire, they cannot afford to pay their rent, and they can't afford to pay for medication. And through the TCB program, we were able to employ those individuals. So with this program, it's not only about clean and green, but it's about the investment of the people in the City of Philadelphia. When you invest in people, when you invest in neighborhoods, you have a vibrant and economic community. So today, like I said, we are in favor of the Bill 250916. We appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you today. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Sam Liu, and I'm with the Abolitionist Law Center and Alliance for Just Philadelphia, and I'm in here in opposition to this proposed budget, which is an attack on working-class Philadelphians. In 2015, the jail budget was $240 million with 8,000 people incarcerated. Today, that population has dropped by more than half to 1,300, yet the budget has increased by nearly 30%. Why are we still pouring money into the jails, a place where pregnant moms are in solitary confinement, where 21-year-old Rashawn Chambers died because he did not get insulin, and where incarcerated people are paid just $2 a day to run this jail? Instead, we need lifesaving services like Healthy Homes and Mobile Crisis. Mobile Crisis teams are not fully funded and never have been. People in mental health crises are left waiting for an hour or more. Teams like this could have saved Aaron Rainey, a 36-year-old father who voluntarily agreed to seek treatment. Instead, he was killed by the police. That is unconscionable. And now you're rushing through Councilmember Squilla's Bill 25027300 on the consent calendar with no community input. This bill installs algorithmic surveillance and audio detection under the guise of stopping loud cars, but it's a Trojan horse for mass surveillance that threatens our privacy and freedom. I oppose this budget. I oppose this bill. Poll it, vote no, fund care-not-tops, tax the rich and healthy homes for all.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
That concludes today's public comment, period. We will now consider today's Consent Resolution Agenda. I will ask that the clerk read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection and without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passage calendar. The clerk will now read the titles of the resolutions on the consent agenda.
Resolution 250609, a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the University City Unit 5 Urban Renewal Area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 3223 through 3233 Ray Street and 213 North 33rd Street, 215 through 217 North 33rd Street, and authorizing the Redevelopment Authority to execute the redevelopment contract with Neighborhood Gardens Trust and to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the redevelopment contract. Resolution 250617, a resolution renaming Fifth Street between Huntington and Somerset Street to Jose Malpica Bermudez Way to honor the life and legacy of Jesse Malpica Bermudez, a cultural icon, advocate, and champion of Latin music and community empowerment in Philadelphia. And Resolution 250619, a resolution calling on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to pass SB 71, renaming the Pennsylvania Judicial Center, the Chief Justice Robert N.C. Nix Jr. Judicial Center. 250620, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to 2002 North 20th Street located in the 5th Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And 250629, a resolution approving the appointment of Michael J. Hill to the Veterans Advisory Commission. And Resolution 250630, a resolution recognizing the appointment of Mac Duncan to the Veterans Advisory Commission. 250631, a resolution approving the appointment of Frank W. McElvey to the Veterans Advisory Commission. Resolution 250634, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank a deed conveying title to 2118 East Monmouth Street located in the 1st Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And Resolution 250637, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 666 and 674 Union Street, 3842, 3844, 3851, and 3855 Aspen Street, 747 North 39th Street, 3902 and 3906 Brown Street located in the 3rd Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Majora Lee Catherine Gilmore Richardson for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of each of the resolutions on the Resolution Consent Agenda.
It has the moving property second that each of the resolutions on the consent agenda be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have, and each of the resolutions on the consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider today's bill on the consent agenda. I will ask the clerk to read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection and without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular second reading and final passage calendars. The clerk will now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill Number 250291, an ordinance amending Section 14-533 of the Philadelphia Code, MIN, Mixed Income Neighborhoods Overlay District, to exempt from certain requirements of that section residential development under programs designed to create affordable homeownership, which programs may mandate deed restrictions in agreements establishing ongoing affordability requirements, all under certain terms and conditions. 250293, an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by revising the one-year rule, which limits the filing of permit applications that are substantially similar to a prior application with respect to which an appeal to the zoning board of adjustment has been denied or dismissed, and making related changes all under certain terms and conditions. 250334, an ordinance amending Section 14-1000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Historic Preservation, requiring notification to City Councilmembers of historical designations in the City of Philadelphia. 250431, an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roy Street, 11th Street, Allegheny Avenue, and Germantown Avenue. 250432, an ordinance amending Section 14-529 of the Philadelphia Code entitled VDO, 5th District Overlay District, by removing exceptions for minimal residential lot area and floor area height and dwelling unit density bonus eligibility, all under certain terms and conditions. 250436-A, an ordinance amending Chapter 14-600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use Regulations and Chapter 14-7 entitled Development Standards to establish use requirements for above-ground garages owned by a public entity and new development standards applicable to certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 10th Street, Chestnut Street, 11th Street, and Ludlow Street, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 241024, an ordinance amending Chapter 19-200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled City Funds Deposits Investments Disbursements by amending Section 19-201 entitled City Depositories to remove Citibank NA and Republic First Bank as authorized financial institutions in which the city treasurer may deposit funds, all under certain terms and conditions. 250103, an ordinance authorizing the Procurement Commissioner on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an agreement with the Philadelphia Energy Authority for coordination of a guaranteed energy savings contract for the implementation and evaluation of energy conservation measures designed to reduce energy, water, wastewater, and other consumption or operating costs at specified city properties, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250569, an ordinance authorizing various encroachments in the vicinity of 2654 South 10th Street, Philadelphia, PA 19148, under certain terms and conditions. 250570, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 2101 East York Street, Philadelphia, PA 19125, under certain terms and conditions. 250571, an ordinance amending Chapter 17-1400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Non-Competitively-Bid Contracts Financial Assistance to modify exemptions and provide for reporting and record-keeping in connection with invocation of such exceptions, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 250483, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee simple title or lesser real estate interest in and to all or a portion of the property bounded by Cobb's Creek, 75th Street Extended, Buist Avenue, and 78th Street, and owned by the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, the Philadelphia Land Bank, or the Philadelphia Housing and Development Corporation, all under certain terms and conditions. 250484-A, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee simple title or lesser real estate interest in and to all or a portion of the property known as 1822 through 1830 West Cayuga Street, all under certain terms and conditions. 250526, an ordinance renaming the Wisnoming Recreation Center to the Margaret Tartaglion Recreation Center to honor the life and legacy of Margaret Marge Tartaglion, a pioneering public servant and leader in Philadelphia's politics. 250537, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee simple title or lesser real estate interest in and to all or a portion of the properties known as 4368, 4370, 4372, and 4374 Germantown Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions. 250538, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire fee simple title or lesser real estate interest in and to all or a portion of the properties known as 1911, 1913, 1915, 1917, 1919, 1921, 1923, 1925, and 1927 Cayuga Street, all under certain terms and conditions. 250328, an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 226 by striking from the city plan and vacating Bristol Street from Second Street to Hunting Park Avenue, under certain terms and conditions. 250384, an ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Winona Street from Lawrence Street to Morris Street eastbound. 250425, an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 230 by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portion of Crescent Street from Ridge Avenue to Osborne Street, under certain terms and conditions. 250427, an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Anchor Street between Harrock Street and Large Street, Kennedy Street between Penn Street and Saul Street, Salem Street between Tarsdale Avenue and Walmerath Street, Franklin Street between Cayuga Street and Wingahocking Street, North 8th Street between Wingahocking Street and Cayuga Street, North 7th Street between Butler Street and Pike Street, Bristol Street between Marshall Street and North 7th Street, Bristol Street between North 6th Street and Marshall Street, Master Street between Montgomery Avenue and Cecil B. Moore Avenue. 250430, an ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 123 and abandonment of a certain right-of-way reserved for water main purposes located north of Montgomery Avenue and extending from Broad Street to 15th Street, under certain terms and conditions. 250437, an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by relocating certain portions of the curb lines of Ludlow Street from 10th Street to 11th Street, under certain terms and conditions. 250439, an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code to prohibit the stopping, standing, or parking of a motor vehicle on a public street or is otherwise prohibited for purposes of short dumping and authorization of enforcement through a camera-based enforcement system and designating penalties and impoundment, all under certain terms and conditions. 250488, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 4248 Spruce Street, Philadelphia, PA 19104, under certain terms and conditions. 250489, an ordinance amending Section 12-701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane on South 59th Street from Market Street to Baltimore Avenue and the removal of a travel lane within the same limits, all under certain terms and conditions. 250490, an ordinance amending Section 12-701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane on Port Royal Avenue from Ridge Avenue to Henry Avenue and removal of a parking lane within the same limits, all under certain terms and conditions. 250494, an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 126 by relocating from the Easterly House Line of Dover Street and the Westerly House Line of New Kirk Street, each from York Street to Cumberland Street, thereby widening said Dover Street and New Kirk Streets, under certain terms and conditions, including the dedication to the City of Beds of the widened portions of said Dover Street and New Kirk Streets. 250532, an ordinance amending Section 9-213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled of the Philadelphia Code entitled farmers' markets by changing the boundaries of a permissible location on North Twenty-Second Street, all under certain terms and conditions. Two five zero five three five, an ordinance amending title twelve of the Philadelphia Code entitled traffic code to add provisions related to vehicle parking in front of a fire hydrant, to provide for the removal or immobilization of such vehicles, and for other penalties, and to make related technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions. Two five oh five three six, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of seven-six-two South Ninth Street, Philadelphia, PA one-nine-one four seven, under certain terms and conditions. Two four zero six seven one, an ordinance amending title fifteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled parks and recreation to add new chapter fifteen dash eight hundred entitled events permits to encourage applicants for event planning permits to establish contingency measures, all under certain terms and conditions. Two four one zero eight two, an ordinance amending title fifteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled parks and recreation by adding a new section, fifteen dash six oh six, and new section fifteen dash seven oh six, to establish animal-free areas and provide for the management of animals in parks, playgrounds, and recreation centers, and to provide for penalties and enforcement, all under certain terms and conditions. Two five zero three seven nine, an ordinance amending an ordinance, bill number eight-seven-seven, approved September sixteenth nineteen ninety-four by amending and exhibit thereto in order to increase the limit of the amount of funding any entity may receive in any fiscal year from the Philadelphia Activities Fund.
These bills have been read on two different days. The question for each bill now is, shall the bill pass finally? The clerk shall call the roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye and those bills for which the member is voting nay. The chief clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Young?
Aye on all.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye on all.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye on all.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye on all bills.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye on all bills.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye on all bills. Majority of all the members having voted in the affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions in a regular second reading and final passage calendars. Will the clerk please, the chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandau.
Chief clerk, aye on all bills. Thank you.
Will the clerk please read the title of resolution number two five zero five three nine?
A resolution confirming the appointment of Ryan McAdams to serve on the zoning board of adjustment.
Chair recognizes majority leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding resolution number two five zero five three nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has the moving property second that resolution number two five zero five three nine be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of resolution number two five zero six one eight?
A resolution condemning the Trump administration for cutting federal funding to job core programs and shuttering job core facilities and centers across the U.S.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for a motion regarding resolution number two five zero six one eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has the moving property second that resolution number two five zero six one eight be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of resolution number two five zero six two one?
A resolution authorizing Councilmember Young's appeal on behalf of and as a representative of city council of the decision of the zoning board of adjustment with respect to twenty-five-hundred North Thirty-first Street.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion regarding resolution number two five zero six two one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has the moving property second that resolution number two five zero six two one be adopted. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero one nine? The chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandau.
Council President, could I be noted as nay on that, on two five zero six two one? Thank you.
Yes, for the record, two five zero six two one, Councilmember Rulandau, nay. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero one nine five?
An ordinance amending chapter nineteen dash fifteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled wage and net profits tax by revising certain taxes under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? The chief clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
The ayes are fourteen, the nays, the ayes, oh, Phillips, yes. The ayes are fifteen, the ayes are zero, the majority, the nays are one, I'm sorry. The majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero one nine six?
An ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? The chief clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are one, the majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title? All right, all right, all right, excuse me. Y'all had a chance to talk, though, and public comment. Let us conduct our business and then go from there. Just respect the institution, that's all. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero one nine seven?
An ordinance to adopt a fiscal year twenty-twenty-six capital budget.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? The chief clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are one, the majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero one nine eight?
An ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years, twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty-one inclusive.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? The chief clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are one, the majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Will the chief clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero one nine nine?
An ordinance amending chapter nineteen dash twenty-six hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled business income and receipts taxes to revise tax rates and end certain exclusions from the tax on receipts, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? The chief clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are one, the majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. The chief clerk, please read the title of bill number two five zero two zero zero.
An ordinance amending chapter twelve dash one thousand.
Mr. Oberman, we hear you, sir. We're going to maintain order for a moment, sir. Y'all have to do all the press conferences after votes and all that good stuff, as a democracy, so. Will the chief clerk, please keep moving forward. Please read the title of bill number two five zero two zero zero.
An ordinance amending chapter twelve dash one thousand of the Philadelphia Code entitled traffic code to revise the fee for the use of parking meters, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Chief clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke, I mean, Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are one, the majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Will the clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero two zero one?
An ordinance amending chapter nineteen dash eighteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled school tax authorization to provide for an increase in the tax that the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia is authorized to impose on real estate, and amending chapter nineteen dash thirteen hundred entitled real estate taxes to establish an equivalent reduction in the tax rate for the city real estate tax, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Chief clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are one, the majority of all members voted in affirmative, the bill passes. Will the chief clerk, please read the title of bill number two five zero two zero two?
An ordinance amending section nineteen dash eighteen oh six of the Philadelphia Code entitled authorization real- realty use and occupancy tax to eliminate certain exemptions, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? The chief clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are one, the majority of all members having voted in affirmative, the bill passes.[1439.65] One, the majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Chief Clerk, please read the title of bill number two five zero two one zero.
In ordinance amending section ten dash one thousand one of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Fees of Commissioner of Records, to increase the portion of fees for the recording of deeds and mortgages and related documents to be used for housing trust fund purposes, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil? Councilmember Squilla? Councilmember Bass? Councilmember Ahmad? And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are... One, the majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero two one one?
In ordinance amending chapter nineteen dash fourteen hundred of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Realty Transfer Tax, by revising the rate of the tax, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Nay.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Nay.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Nay.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. Ayes are twelve, nays are four. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero two one two?
In ordinance to amend chapter nineteen dash forty-four hundred of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Development Income Impact Tax, to end imposition of the tax, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Nay.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fourteen, the nays are two. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero five two three?
In ordinance amending title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Zoning and Planning, by revising and clarifying certain provisions and making technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero two five... two five zero five two four?
In ordinance amending section fourteen dash eight oh two of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Motor Vehicle Parking Ratios, by removing residential parking ratio minimums for the CMX dash four and CMX dash five zoning districts, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity? Councilmember Driscoll? Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero five two five?
In ordinance amending title fourteen of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Zoning and Planning, for the creation of a new zoning district, entitled RTA dash two, residential two-family attached, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero one seven four?
In ordinance amending chapter nineteen dash forty-six hundred of title nineteen of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Low Income Tax Provisions, by extending the deadline for low-income taxpayers to apply for a refund or forgiveness of real estate taxes, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero three three two?
In ordinance amending chapter nineteen dash thirty-two hundred of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone Economic Development District and Strategic Development Area, to provide for additional extensions of certain benefits, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier? Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero five two eight?
In ordinance approving the fiscal year 2026 capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, and acknowledging receipt of the revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2027 through 2031, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are... One, the majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero five two nine?
In ordinance approving the amendment of the fiscal year 2025 capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith, subject to certain constraints and conditions, and acknowledging the receipt of the revised forecast of capital budgets for fiscal years 2026 through 2030, as amended.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Nay.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are fifteen, the nays are... One, the majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero five three zero?
In ordinance authorizing an increase in the non-electoral indebtedness of the city within Pennsylvania constitutional limit, authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale, to provide funds towards various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, and authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connections with the issuance of bonds and other certain actions.
The Chair recognizes majority of the Catherine Gilmore Richardson for motion.
Thank... (cough) Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I would like to offer an amendment to bill number two five zero five three zero. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has a moving property second that the amendment to bill number two five zero five three zero be adopted. All in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the bill has been amended. This bill will be placed on the final passage calendar for our next session of council. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero five six six?
In ordinance authorizing the Director of Planning and Development, on behalf of the city, to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a community development block grant, to file applications to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to apply for a Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Grant, and to file applications with the Commonwealth to obtain grants under the Act of April 12, 1956, PL 1449, Section Four, as amended, to prevent and eliminate blight, authorizing the Director of Planning and Development and the Director of Commerce to file applications to obtain other grants from the Commonwealth, authorizing the Director of Commerce to use the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program, and authorizing the Director of Planning and Development and the Director of Commerce to enter into all understandings and assurances contained in such applications, and to take all necessary action to accept the grants, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks? I mean, Council... I'm sorry, Councilmember Young? Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes. Would the Clerk please read the title of bill number two five zero five six seven?
In ordinance constituting the twenty-eighth supplemental ordinance to the restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989, as supplemented, authorizing the bond committee to issue and sell one or more series or sub-series of tax-exempt or taxable water and waste water revenue bonds and revenue refunding bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit enhancement or payment or liquidity sources, or any combination of the foregoing, for such bonds, providing that such bonds shall bear interest at fixed or variable rates, determining the sufficiency of pledged project revenues, authorizing the Director of Finance to take certain actions with regard to the sale of such bonds, the investment of proceeds thereof in the city's continuing disclosure obligations with respect to such bonds, setting forth the use of proceeds of such bonds, covenating the payment of interest and principal, supplementing the restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989, and specifying applicability of sections of the First Class City Revenue Bond Act and the restated General Water and Waste Water Revenue Bond Ordinance of 1989.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye, the ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted affirmative, the bill passes.
Or letters of credit and one or more series to finance or refinance such plan and authorizing and approving the obligation of the city of Philadelphia to pay in full, when due, the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement, authorizing certain city officers to take certain actions required to issue such bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness, covenating that the city of Philadelphia will make necessary appropriations in each of the city's fiscal years to provide for and will make timely payments of the service fee and other amounts due under the service agreement, requiring an annual program statement and budget to be approved by council, and other requirements, and authorizing and approving the director of finance of the city and other city officials to take other necessary or appropriate actions to effectuate the purposes of this ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number 2401057?
An ordinance amending chapter nine dash six hundred of the Philadelphia code entitled "Service and Other Businesses" to add a new section nine dash six forty entitled "Mandatory Posting of Warning of Unlawful Transfer of Firearms" to require licensed firearm dealers to post signs warning that purchasing firearms for another is criminally punishable, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Sorry, aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen and nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, bill passes. Good job, Councilmember Jones. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number 250044-A?
An ordinance amending chapter nine dash eight hundred of the Philadelphia code entitled "Landlord and Tenant" to establish requirements related to security deposits for residential rentals and establishing remedies for violations, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. Counsel be at E. Chief Clerk, please call the roll. I mean, wait. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was nay. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Nay.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Nay.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
Council President Johnson?
Aye. Ayes are thirteen, the nays are three. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Good job, Councilmember Landau. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number 250331? Y'all want to clap? Go ahead, clap for it. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number 250331?
An ordinance amending chapter nine dash eight hundred of the Philadelphia code entitled "Landlord and Tenant" to hereby authorize the creation of an anti-displacement fund to establish violations for displacement and to authorize the Department of Planning and Development to administer the anti-displacement fund and amending section A dash five oh five entitled "Cease Operations Order" to add notice requirements, all under certain terms and conditions.
This is your opportunity. Let me, let me, let me call a vote first. This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. In the spirit of our colleague, Councilmember Nicholas Rurk, a majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number 250213-A? And good job, members. This bill, well, read the... Would a clerk please read the title of bill number 250213-A?
An ordinance amending section nine dash six three three of the Philadelphia code entitled "Sale of Electronic Smoking Devices and Unapproved Nicotine Delivery Products" to update definitions and to provide for additional penalties, enforcement, and compliance options, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gautier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Losada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are sixteen, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Good job, Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma. The... Chair recognizes Councilmember Ma.
Thank you. I just want to, everyone to know that this bill is a result of young people's
advocacy. It started with the Youth Commission, Philadelphia Youth Commission, bringing the concern that youth vaping became and has become an epidemic. And we'll just wrap up.
Dr. Nina Ma, speeches are reserved for the end of council. Got to be fair to everybody else that passed the bill today. Okay, go ahead.
Is Kavance Smith, who couldn't be here. It's the last day of his school. And he was the one who was the primary mover with his testimony. So thank you very much.
Congratulations. Let's give the member a round of applause. Good work. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution thanking DeeDee Inge for her many years of distinguished service to the city of Philadelphia and congratulating her on the occasion of her retirement introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes majority of Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf and all the members of council, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the founders of Mesquian Originals for their contributions to Philadelphia's fashion scene introduced by Councilmember Thomas on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes majority whip Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate your leadership on this particular issue. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring Philadelphia Bar Association Executive Director Harvey Hurdle for his years of service with and retirement from the Philadelphia Bar Association introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating the tenth anniversary of the United States Supreme Court's landmark marriage equality ruling, Obergefell versus Hodges, and honoring the lead plaintiff, James Jim, James Jim Obergefell, and the twenty-nine other plaintiffs who bravely stood up for their fundamental right to marry introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution repealing resolution number 250568, adopted May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, which also named the fifteen-hundred block of Gerard Avenue as Alfonso Dealway introduced by Councilmember Young.
She recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property. Second, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution calling on the United States, a non-privileged resolution calling on the United States Congress to facilitate the immediate release of FY twenty-five Historic Preservation Funding introduced by Councilmember Squilla.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squilla for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property. Second, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Tracy Noel Powell and celebrating her boundless spirit, tireless work, and profound impact on the lives of countless others introduced by Councilmember Bass.
Councilmember Bass, how would you like to, would you like to do a moment of silence vote on this vote?
I would, if we could do a moment of silence, Mr. President.
Okay. The chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass for a motion. Ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence vote on this resolution. Resolution has been passed. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution thanking Philadelphia Eagles owner Jeffrey Lory and his family for their generous fifty million donation to the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia and Penn Medicine to establish the Lory Autism Institute, an organization centered on accelerating autism research, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad on behalf of Council President Johnson.
She recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution on your behalf.
It has been moved in property. Second, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the resolution is adopted. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
There are no further resolutions in my possession, Council President.
Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Oh, President. I want to express my disappointment in the twenty-twenty-six budget and explain why I'm voting no today. I voted no on the tax bills today because this plan overwhelmingly benefits large corporations. And in the first month of this Trump--
Member Brooks, one second. Could we keep it down? Because I don't think members can hear the member remarks. Chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you. In the first six months of this Trump administration, we have already seen cuts that have directly caused Philadelphians to lose their livelihood. In the coming year, we expect devastating cuts to SNAP, Medicaid, and other federally funded programs that working families rely on. The budget that we are voting on today is largely unchanged from the mayor's proposal. City services are flat funded or cut at a time when we need them the most. Across the country and including in Harrisburg, legislations, legislators worried about Trump's cuts are increasing state and local funding for services and identifying new revenue sources, not this budget. However, this budget reflects a significant shift in the city's council power to advocate for the resources of our constituents. Numerous nonprofits my office has helped fund in the past have been left in the dark on both process and funding. City council took a major step forward in last year's budget with the first ever direct funding for Planned Parenthood and continued funding for Abortion Liberation Fund. Now, at the same time, congressional Republicans are set to slash funding for Planned Parenthood nationwide. The city funding for our local chapter of Planned Parenthood has disappeared. We also know that our young people at risk. The school district is projecting a large budget shortfall and school closures. Multiple council members and parents across black and brown neighborhoods advocated for these increases in mileage rate in order to boost public school funding. Instead, this budget sets up our schools for major cuts in the coming years. For this reason, I cannot support this budget. I made a promise to protect Philadelphians this budget cycle, and I'm sorry to say that this budget doesn't do it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Brooks. Speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. And I want to thank you very much for your leadership throughout this spring session and for all the hard work and the late nights. We appreciate you and all that you do for us throughout the budget process so that we can get to this space and place. I also wanted to wish you, Council President, and all of the fathers on city council a happy Father's Day in advance. That is specifically for Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr. Each year, we will be celebrating and uplifting each of you because we appreciate all that you do for our children. It's not just the moms getting the job done, it's the dads, too. So happy Father's Day in advance.
Thank you for that. Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, but thank you, Kathy Gilmore Richardson. Fathers, understand what I'm about to say. It's your mother. It's your mother. It's your mother, and then maybe it's your father. And we get it because they are our backbone. I want to shift and kind of echo what you just said about your leadership, sir. I don't say things I don't mean. You know me. You piloted this budget process masterfully. I know my good friend and colleague, she knows how I feel about her professionally, but I'm gonna push back gently. Sometimes you got to look at the glass half full, not just half empty. I listened to the advocates that came. I heard cheers. I heard jeers. Some things that you like in the budget, some things you don't. Some things you fight about, some things you win, some things you lose. But the process of making this budget is not easy, and it is not perfect. But the imperfect shouldn't be the enemy of the good. I've been here a minute, only second to old man River O'Neil, but I have never heard a mayor put this much emphasis on affordable housing. And I know that this is a historic commitment to that process. Is it perfect? No. I red-circled some of the things that I had question about. But the good should not be the enemy of the imperfect. I said that differently. But you know what I mean. I watched my colleagues struggle with this budget. I've seen colleagues who will go unnamed come in here at one in the morning, flailing their hands in frustration because we should have probably been let go earlier. But the process of making that sausage was difficult. I watched one of my colleagues come in here, throw his hands up, did I say his? Throw his hands up and said, I give up on this. I've been fighting this all by myself, right? But here we are, sir. And I'm saying to you that some of the things that you got to think about on the cuts to business taxes, Brother Troy ain't here. From W U R D got laid off. Businesses, small businesses are a part of the infrastructure of our economy, too. And the issues and pushback I get often doesn't come from the mighty chambers of commerce. It comes from the mom and pop business owners that have been catching hell since the pandemic. There are commercial partners that you and I represent that took a L during those downturns during the civil unrest that ain't never came back and may never come back. And if we don't start giving them a break, too, there'll be more Troy's that we lay off. So I say this to you, that all of you look a little tired, little wore out. But that's all right. You earned this time. And for the benefit of the people, I thank you, Mr. President. I thank my mayor for going through this, and I thank this body for voting out a budget for the closing. The uncertainty at the federal government means that we can't be against, like, you may not have messed with this person, that person before, but we all in the Philadelphia foxhole together right now. And we got to kind of pull ourselves together and say, I'm gonna hold my nose on this vote, and I'm gonna go with it for the benefit of the whole of Philadelphia. And I thank you, Mr. President. I thank our mayor, and I thank this council for doing their level best to protect the citizens of Philadelphia. Thank you, and have a great, great break.
Thank you, Member Jones, for those kind remarks. The chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President. As we close out this spring session, I'd like to thank our incredible interns for all their hard work. I think my interns might not still be here, but if Jasmine, Ali, and Andrea are still here, oh, right on, there they are, yay! Please stand if you're here. They have all been instrumental in planning policies, helping constituents, and serving the city. Thank you guys so much. It's been so wonderful to have you guys. I'd also like to recognize the final passage of my move-in affordability plan today. Having worked as a housing lawyer for decades, I know that the upfront costs of moving can be the difference between staying put and giving yourself a fresh start. Whether they be aging seniors, low-income families trying to improve their living situations, or people leaving unsafe housing, or a young person looking to move to Philly, I'm incredibly proud with this legislation that move-in costs won't be as expensive a burden, and I appreciate all of the conversations I've had with colleagues and advocates to get this done. It's Pride Month. It's still Pride Month. And today, I say, I want to say I'm thankful for all my colleagues here for supporting two resolutions today, recognizing local and national LGBTQ plus leaders. First, my dear friend Harvey Hurdle, who's retiring from his position as Executive Director of the Bar Association, but who has worked deeply within larger institutions promoting LGBTQ rights. Harvey's been a mentor of mine and has been very helpful for me to understand how the larger institutions support our work. Because we didn't have speeches last week, I want to give a shout out to Chris Bartlett as well, who I recognized last week. Chris has been super supportive and helpful for me as a mentor in teaching me so much at an early age about speaking truth to power, being an activist, fighting the fight, from screaming in a megaphone to back in the early nineties, caring for our siblings who were dying of AIDS. Chris literally taught me how to hug people in the hospital and give them, kiss them lightly on the head as we said goodbye. I also wanted, I gave a resolution today to thank, recognizing the ten-year anniversary of the landmark Obergefell case, which celebrates ten years of same-sex marriage in this country. My wife Carrie and I became the first couple in Pennsylvania to get a same-sex marriage license. And earlier this month, I had the absolute joy and pleasure of finally meeting Jim Obergefell in Washington, DC. He is a wonderful man. As lovely and wonderful as these things are, we have to recognize how pride this year feels different. There's a dark cloud hanging over it, a rising tide of hatred that is not just alarming, alarming, but deadly. Verbal assaults, physical violence, and political attacks against LGBTQ plus people are escalating across the country. And at every level of government, Donald Trump's GOP is fueling it, dismantling rights, inciting fear, and targeting our very existence. Incidents have already been in the rise in Philadelphia as well, and we are witnessing this disturbing trend. According to GLAD, since May of last year, there have been nine hundred and thirty-two violent anti-LGBTQ plus incidents in the United States, an average of two point five every single day. Over that, half of them have specifically targeted transgender and gender nonconforming people with a disproportionate impact on people of color. This violence doesn't happen in a vacuum. It grows in the shadow of hate speech, of state-sanctioned discrimination, of leaders who use platforms to dehumanize us. And when the most powerful man in the world demonizes LGBTQ plus people, this is a result. Broken families, stolen futures, empty seats at the table. As we close out this spring session, I ask that my colleagues and city council and everyone in this chamber think about this, honor the LGBTQ lives that are lost to violence and hatred, and let us recommit not just to celebrating pride, but to defending our community with every tool that we have. Thank you, Council President. Everybody have a great break.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Mike Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, leadership team. Thank you, colleagues, for all your hard work these last several months. These budgets aren't easy, but I think we did a good job collectively today. And just want to highlight a couple things, Mr. President. I was proud to introduce and champion the legislation that gives the City Controller's Office fiscal oversight of the mayor's eight-hundred-million-dollar home plan. This plan represents a historic investment in affordable housing, and with that comes a responsibility to ensure that every dollar is spent wisely, fairly, and transparently. Oversight isn't about slowing down progress, it's about building public trust, protecting taxpayer resources, and ensuring that the housing crisis is addressed with both urgency and integrity. I want to thank the Controller's Office for stepping up to serve as an independent watchdog and for their partnership in safeguarding this once-in-a-generation investment. This legislation is about accountability and about delivering real results in every neighborhood, including my home northeast Philadelphia. And secondly, Mr. President, I want to thank you for introducing the Philadelphia Retirement Savings Program, an important step towards economic dignity for working people in our city. This bill creates an automatic savings program for employees who don't have access to retirement plans through their jobs, particularly small businesses or part-time positions. With this program, Philadelphia is filling a gap, offering a pathway to long-term financial security for workers who too often have been left behind. And I'm proud to support a measure that empowers people to build wealth over time, reduces reliance on public assistance in the future, and strengthens our city's economic foundation. This is smart, compassionate policy, and I thank you, President Johnson. Whether we're talking about affordable housing, public safety, or retirement security for working people, we're making long-term investments to strengthen the fabric of our city. I'm grateful that I've played a role in advancing those priorities, and I look forward to-- I'm grateful that I've played a role in advancing those priorities, and I look forward to continuing the work ahead. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm very grateful for your resolution honoring Tracy Powell. She was a friend of mine, supporter of mine, a colleague of mine. Every word that was mentioned about her today was absolutely true. From the moment I met her, you know, years ago, when I first started working in this space until our last conversation, I mean, it's always been the same. She's been that same person. So thank you for honoring her. Thank you for honoring Ms. Keen. That took me back to when I was a young boy here in the city. That's what we wore. That's what we, you know, that was the style. I mean, the artwork was so unique. It was so Philly. And so thank you for that. We, you know, that was, we need that. We need stuff that makes us Philadelphia and stand out as Philadelphia. Also, you know, I want to kind of echo some of the sentiments of my colleague, Councilman Curtis Jones, you know, when it comes to this budget and the mayor's home plan. You know, you look at it, you circle some things, but at the end of the day, when you look at what this bill will do for our city, there are some, more positives that come out of this bill. And with the help of Councilmember Driscoll introducing legislation to provide, you know, the oversight to make sure there's transparency, I do think that as a council, we'll be able to work with the administration on ensuring that these goals can implemented to the benefit and the interest of the city of Philadelphia. And lastly, today, Mr. President, you know, there were some folks in the chambers, you know, who mentioned some statements about a library in our district. This used to be Moore Library. And I want to be very clear with listening public to really understand what is happening here. So we all know that there is issues with libraries throughout our entire city. Deferred maintenance has been, I wouldn't even call it deferred. It's been 20, 30 years since some of our libraries had any type of maintenance done to it. And so one of the very first things I did when I came upon this body is advocate for more funding for our CSU B Moore Library. And with the support of this body, we achieved that. You know, there was only about $5 million allocated to CSU B Moore Library. We fought to get an additional $5 million allocated for the CSU B Moore Library. And we're going to continue to keep fighting to get more money for the CSU B Moore Library. But yes, I have big dreams. I have big dreams for my district, and why would I be serving if I didn't, right? Why are we serving if you do not have big dreams for your constituents? You know, we have a youth gun violence issue in this city. There is a surge in gun violence in terms of perpetrators and victims amongst the youth in our city. So if you're upset that I'm fighting for more money for our library because I'd like to see a true 21st century library that has the space, that has the physical space that our teens could use in order to help prevent some of these tragedies that happen, you know, with gun violence. A teen can get a gun just as easy as they can take out a book in the city. That is true. A study found that, you know, for 14-year-old black males, there is a 1 in 8 chance that you will be shot in or killed by a firearm by the time you're 25 years old. Compared that same age range for non-Hispanic white males, there's a 1% chance, 1 out of 100 chance, you'll be shot in or killed by a firearm by the age of 25. And so you look in that area, they were talking about the 19121 ZIP code, the area that I was raised in, right? Those are the young people who are more likely or not to be shot in or killed by gun violence. So why aren't we creating spaces that's going to put positive things into the hands of our young people? Let's talk about space. Yes, there are proposed renovations for the CSU B Moore Library. But the staff room in the basement is proposed to be about 306 square feet. There's a workroom that's proposed to be about 445 square feet, and the teen space is only 400 square feet. How many teenagers can fit in 400 square feet of space in one of the most violent and dangerous districts in the city of Philadelphia? How many? We need more space. We need a new library. A brand-new library that can host things like e-gaming, right? Because they've told us already, Councilman Thomas, they prefer to be in libraries, right? To host these types of things. That's what we mean when we say 21st century library. Where's the space for social media for these kids, right? There's no space there. You cannot do that in 400 square feet. You cannot. It's impossible. So all these folks who are here advocating, talking about I'm this, that, and the other with developers and all that, come see me. Because, listen, I'm always going to be fighting for our kids. Always. We have to think about the next generation. Stop thinking about ourselves. Think about these kids. Over 1,500 juvenile gun arrests in the past three years, Mr. President, right? What are we doing? So I will continue to advocate and fight for the youth of my council district, our council district, the fifth council district, North Philadelphia, because those are the youth that always end up as a statistic. We're trying to change that image. We can't change it with these outdated infrastructure. It's impossible. It's impossible. Those who know may not know, at some point in time, you know, there was the Free Library Foundation and then the Free Library Philadelphia. The Free Library Foundation used to fund a lot of stuff in our libraries. That's no more. That money don't exist. It's not there anymore. It's not the same. We have to figure this out. So I'm going to continue to fight for more funding for our libraries, to continue to make sure that we have new facilities for our kids. That library was built in 1961, '62, so that means a 70-year-old today used to use that library. Why should a 7-year-old today use the same library that a 70-year-old used to use? Technology moves so fast. Everything is so much different now. This is a whole different world. We need new spaces, and I'm going to continue to fight for new spaces for our babies because that's what they are. These teenagers are our babies, and they need space to be teenagers so they can stop being out here acting like adults. They need spaces to be kids. And we have to keep fighting for spaces for them to be kids. And if you disagree, you disagree, but I'm always going to be out here fighting to make sure that our kids have spaces to be kids because I can't take 1,500 kids getting arrested with guns. The surge of kids getting arrested, the surge of kids getting killed. I mean, I've already talked about going to a gymnasium, you know, this year alone. Last year, I went to a couple of them for teenagers. Like, this is a problem, and we should not normalize this. And if you upset that I'm trying to get more for our kids, that tells me something about you. Who are you in it for? Are you in it for our kids? Because I don't think so. I'm going to continue to lead my district with integrity, Mr. President, and my constituents know how to hold me accountable. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Member Young, and keep fighting the good fight for your constituents. As there are no more speeches, first, I want to say Happy Father's Day to all of the fathers, and most importantly, I want to thank each and every last one of you for your hard work and your dedication as relates to moving the city of Philadelphia forward. And leadership is not new to me. I recognize in this process that as we work toward moving the city of Philadelphia forward, we always not gonna always agree, but I always know that we have a common mission, each and every last single one of you, including myself, on how we move the city of Philadelphia forward. And most importantly, I believe that every last member who I am working with, I know for a fact are working sincerely in best interest of the citizens and the residents here in the city of Philadelphia. For some, that may look one way. For others, that may look another way. But that common mission is to prove the quality of life of all residents here in the city of Philadelphia. And so I'm truly proud and honored on the wrap-up this council session, but also like to just note, always in terms of the hard work that we have been doing from January to now, we passed a total of 58 bills and 20 resolutions. And so I just want to just put that out there for the record. No, I'm sorry. Today, we passed a total of 58 bills. Today. Today. A total of 58 bills and 20 resolutions. I just say that for the record in terms of the work we are doing, right? Because oftentimes, I think sometimes some folks think we just coming down and just having fun picking up paychecks, right? And that doesn't include the countless number of community events that we attend, the countless number of community events that we host in our neighborhoods that's not even on the record. But most importantly, first and foremost, we are legislators, and we are here to legislate. So with that being said, the Chair recognizes my majority with Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President. I also just want to add Happy Father's Day as well too, and thank you to all of the tech staff, support staff, council staff-
Let's get them round of applause.
Sergeant at arms, the entire team who made this budget session even possible. So with that being said, thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, September 11th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m.
It has been moved in property segment that council stand adjourned until September 11th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. Have a great summer, everyone.